Sharing with you the purpose of this board session is really two. The first one is to make sure we have a full understanding of our return to learn plan. That first draft on Friday. I'm confident that you enjoyed reading that from front to back over the course of the weekend. I look forward to clarifying and discussing key areas in that document. And then last, to consider the recommendations that we would offer to you tonight about where we go from here. So just to ground us, it's important to me that we always ground ourselves in the why and why we're here. And that truly is the mission of our school district. Especially in a time like this when there's so many people competing for interests and wanting to make our interests or their interests our interests. I think it's important to remember that we come to this place in this format because of the interests of our students. We're committed to preparing every learner for a lifetime of personal success. And then we've committed to being unified, passionate, visionary in order to do that. Our vision, what we see as our work, the way we do this when we're doing it well, is that we see achievement happening for our kids and we see we are responding as we need to. We are responsive to all of the needs of the students and our employees in our processes. That we see innovation and professionalism. And I hope that you see the way our team has been innovating their practices all summer long in preparation for what's ahead. This has certainly been an opportunity for us. Yes, it's challenging, no doubt. But more so, it's been an opportunity for us to dig into our practices, look at what we do, and innovate in a way that we can ensure we can still provide that excellent inking experience while keeping everyone safe. Professionalism, I think our community of staff members models that professionalism to the highest degree possible. The fact that we've had nearly 200 of our employees coming together every week for two hours of time over the course of the summer to make sure we're ready to go is just one piece of evidence to me, the dedication and professionalism of our staff. And then the last one, I think the people in this room in particular tonight, seeing that vision of ourselves in terms of the way we lead. We lead our students, we lead our community, we lead our staff. We do that by being united in how we start. So I hope all of those pieces of vision really come to play as we move forward in making decisions. I also want to highlight, and I'm sorry for those of you that just came on the steering committee, I won't be as detailed in this, but I don't know the degree to which this entire board has spent time in our strategic plan. But one of the key foundations, a pillar of that strategic plan is our theory of action. In my previous role as a building principal, I spent a lot of time in the second half of that theory of action, really talking about what we do at the implementer level with teachers and building principals. For us here in this room tonight, I think this top half of our theory of action is really where the rubber meets the road for us. This whole theory is set up so that if we do everything listed here, then every learner is prepared for that lifetime of personal success. So if you look at our responsibilities as a board of directors and as several system leaders, we believe that if a unified community collaborates to enrich the school experience, I think we're showing tonight that we are unified and are going to collaborate. If we, as a board of education, provide excellence in governance through our policies, our operational oversight, our self-governance amongst one another, and our relations with the superintendent and public, and if our office of superintendent and administrators provide excellence in management, if we do our job while managing all of those resources, and if our staff and parents and public provide consultation to us on issues of management, and if the board, district personnel, and parents operate in our roles and relationships. Here's the key piece for me. With trust, alignment, and accountability, with that top half is operating at full capacity, our classrooms are going to make sure that bottom half is operating, we're going to reach the place where every learner is prepared for that lifetime of personal success. So before we dig into the plan, I wanted to address the governor's proclamation from Friday because that was certainly something that was of high interest to all of us. And I think in some ways, our, what I would call intentional, deliberate, and thorough investigation as to how we wanted to operationalize our return to learn plan and what we needed it to say, has positioned us as a district to take what we heard on Friday and modify where needed and continue forward to support our teachers and other staff members in bringing the plan to life. There were two key things that came out of that that I want to highlight. The first one, the idea of remote learning. So thing in your mind that required continuous learning, so everybody's remote. The only time that remote learning can be provided, according to the proclamation, is one, if a parent or guardian voluntarily selects that for their child. Two, the Department of Education, in consultation with public health, says, you know what, we need to all go to a remote learning environment to do this for the health and safety of our state. Number three, that we as a school system, again in consultation with local and state public health, we determine that individual students or classrooms or buildings move to remote learning if an outbreak occurs essentially. And then number four is an interesting one, kind of exciting. If we choose to move to that due to a weather-related event instead of taking it on its own. So that was part one of the proclamation that I wanted to highlight. The second part came about through a Senate file 2310 that the governor signed, I think, June 29th. And that guidance said that a school cannot provide more than half of its instruction to any student through remote learning opportunities over the course of any two-week period without a proclamation. Okay? So essentially, when you think about our hybrid models, we had developed, drafted two possible hybrid models, a 25% and a 50%. You looked at both of those several weeks ago now. The 25% one becomes obsolete based on this guidance from the governor. And the 50% is still something we want to talk about. And what we need to do is go in and refine it to ensure that our 50% truly make sure that every student receives half of their instruction onsite and half virtually. So we'll talk a little bit more about that rule a little bit. So in terms of what this means for us, we are ready to offer a remote learning option to our families. We have a team that's been talking about it probably for the last two weeks, what it could just look like. We're ready to go as soon as tomorrow, getting some of that information out. We can talk a little bit about how we would approach that remote learning option for families in the detailed part of our sharing. And then the second one, I already mentioned, that we will take a look at our hybrid model and make sure that our students receive at least half of their instruction over the course of a two-week period. Essentially, those of you that have had students in our secondary schools who are familiar with our A-Day, B-Day approach to physical education with them, we would do something very similar to that, A-Day, B-Day type. All right. So because we're on such a tight timeline, I've asked Darren, who knows my talking habits well, to time each section. How am I doing, Darren?
A little over, but I'm going to still have it go off at the top.
Okay. So we are going to dig into each part of the plan as follows. So we're going to take the biggest chunk of time, I think we've got about 20 minutes or so, to dig into the opening, the first document of the plan that really covers the comprehensive system. Talks about our safety, talks about our human resources, all of that. We want you to ask all the questions you have, and we're going to play a little bit of tag-team here, in and out. Who needs to be at the podium, speaking to you specifically on the questions you asked. Then we'll spend about five minutes or so in a hybrid, about five minutes in the required online, and about five minutes in the traditional onsite. Because those are fair, you can see the pattern across the three with slight changes. We figured that the first part probably is where most of the questions are. Right? Then I'm going to wrap it up with a few of my thoughts. So let's start with the section. I'm going to see if this works for you, please do. It does. So by the way, if all the content is here, it may not be as beautiful to look at as Samantha will make it be when she completes her work in it. But hopefully, right now at least, if you're proficient at Google, you can click around and get to whatever you want to as fast as you want. So we're going to start by looking at sections basically 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8. And we're just going to open it up to you for what did you see in there that might have been a gap, something we overlooked, or a question about any of those components.
I have a question under the group gatherings and social distancing requirements. Tail end of the first paragraph, "Ink and community schools will limit the use of large group gathering areas." Does that mean you won't use them as an alternative classroom or?
What we're thinking there mostly is that we will not use that for a space where people would come in, like at the beginning of the school day, where normally they might gather as a gym. We won't have assemblies in the gym or the cafeteria, the auditorium, things like that, where they try to keep people out in the classroom.
I have a question on that same page. You talked about the third bullet of under building traffic guidelines and screening multiple entry points and exit points with staggered times for students. Is that, I think I read it later on, do you simply need the bus kids go first and then everyone else first? Or is there something different when you're talking about staggered?
Correct. We're going to try to make it so that students that arrive in a car versus students that arrive walking or on a bike versus students that arrive on a bus all arrive at slightly different times to school, just so we don't have that pressure of everybody all at once arriving. Am I talking loud enough, Samantha? I feel like I'm screaming.
We have permission to put in my phone now. Wasn't it, is it in the section? Sorry, I wrote one page, I forgot, and then I banned that section. It looked like potentially offering no pay-to-write officially. What percentage of our students are paid to write?
That is a question that I can't answer, but I can find that answer.
I just wondered what, how many will write?
It depends on the school. There are some schools, like Westwood in particular, that has used pay-to-writes quite a bit. Right now, what we know is that the maximum number that the state will allow to put on a bus is two students per seat if they're wearing a mask. Now, our elementary grounds generally would have three students per seat. And so we're going to go through and make sure that we are able to do what we need to do to get the students who we have to provide transportation for under code. If there's space after that, we'll go back in and open that up. Yes, we are working with social workers, guidance counselors to work to screen and each to access pay-to-write through the history of the school.
This may have already happened, but are you asking families to confirm how they're going to get their children to school before the school year starts or?
We did that through the registration process and then we will confirm that after we get this survey back on who's opting for the open mind, we'll reach out for all of that information.
Yeah, I couldn't look you in the face and tell you what was in the registration about that.
Yeah. It basically said if you qualify for transportation, you attend.
The board, you know, you have to be, you know, in any right?
It's not. It's not.
You're not asking me personally, I don't know. I feel that way when we survey families, like when people all said things, do they really understand that they're signing up for that? You know, or do you need to like circle back around?
We continue to work. We haven't asked that question before in this conference meeting we've asked it. We'll continue to find that. I just want to turn out for everyone that qualifies first, just work backwards from there.
Is there anything that can be, that implementation this year and how that might change the busing?
Yeah, it will change the busing without question. So again, what Durham is working through right now, where we're needing at least people not more often, is taking all of the new boundaries. And it's who qualifies is on the list. I don't know how to title it quickly on the website, but it's on the website. Plug in your address and it tells you to qualify or not. They're going to, they're going to help for everybody, even with the person per seat. We'll make sure that everybody gets.
Under student services, is there any, this clarification, why have substitute nurses? Are they? Have a meaning or am I being just?
Did I put something separate?
Is it in the human resources? Student services, this school nursing services, we're going to hire 11 substitute nurses.
Not yet. We've never had substitute nurses.
I don't know. I can tell you that that's not this section, but I can tell you about substitute nurses, which I don't think in the HR section is in quotation marks, which is why I was confused.
And building subs, page 10, is also in quotation marks.
Well, yes. Anybody who needs that now can tell.
I thought you were saying.
It's in quotation marks. I think it's in, so there's probably what I was thinking when I titled that. So not only when I think of a substitute, like a substitute teacher, I think of somebody who is coming and they are directly taking over the role of the person who is asked at that day. We need a better name for these groups because they, both the substitute nurses and the building subs will come to work every single day, even if there's no need for them to provide coverage for a particular employee. So we would hire them as subs. One of their responsibilities would be to serve as a substitute, but they're also doing other things.
I just hope we weren't compromising the medical side, like we're compromising some of that.
No, no, no. We have that in. I'm looking for Nancy. We've already spoken with Nancy about what would, what qualifications would we need to include in that job post to make sure we're getting the right people. It's because they're doing more than something and I need a better name for what we call these people. Thank you.
You got it. So in terms of substitutes.
I knew if I came up here, I couldn't run back to my chair, but you know.
You know, I think, I mean, I appreciate the two to five building subs, but what if I can't get to the five people? Like, what's the plan on that?
So a couple of things that I think are pieces of the puzzle that I'm sharing with you. And the answer is there might be days when we do not have enough staff and we need to make a decision about what happens in that building. I will tell you what we are trying to do proactively to avoid that happening. And I don't want to get too far ahead of the discussion that I think is later in our agenda about this remote option, right? So we had several staff members, I would say in the neighborhood of 50 staff members, that have reached out to me, who have informed me very informally about underlying health conditions. People that normally would feel good enough to come to work, they're not, they're not so sick that they can't work. They feel fine, but their health is at higher risk if they go into a school setting. What we're hoping to do, and I am cautiously optimistic about this, is that if we have enough students and enough families who say, my child will be doing this all online option, that we will be able to pair up those staff members with those students, which I think will lessen the likelihood that we are going to have adults in the building that require coverage. Because we'll have a group of high-risk adults that are already out of the building. Our intent will be to do a couple of things if we do run into a situation, which will happen at some point this year, where we've used all of our building subs or we don't have enough building subs to cover. We're looking at what are the qualifications of associates who are in buildings? How can they be used? Not just with the guidance that came out from the governor on Friday. We also, we already had a pretty strong crop of associates, several of whom have education backgrounds and education degrees. And we're not totally abandoning our giant group of 400 subs that existed before. In fact, we've surveyed all of those folks and asked them to tell us if they're interested in coming back next year and if they are, if they would be willing to commit to only subbing in AKD or to being sort of assigned to a dedicated group of subs. Not our building subs that come every day, but like other substitutes that are sort of affiliated with a particular building or maybe two buildings, so don't have lots of transmission and transit between buildings with those folks. That survey was due today. So we don't have the data on exactly how many people told us they were congested in coming back. But I know we were getting pretty high response rate. So we'll be building out sort of individual sub-lanets or sub-tots for every one of our buildings that will include building subs, other people, and then the rest of the associates that they can talk to.
So the idea, the idea is that.
The idea is what?
The idea is that what, what potentially be a, they would be able to be an online person. You do some type of remote option, that seems inevitable. What if that's not possible? Is that person kind of, you know, stuck with being in fear that they're going to get a virus or how that?
Yeah. And so Melissa's going to keep me honest here, but if somebody has a documented medical situation and they cannot, you know, be at work. But I will, just for oversimplification, I'll just say, basically what they're doing is they're making an American's and this built exactly ADA accommodation. Their accommodation is to telework. If that's not something that we can provide for them, then we would really need to make sure that we are providing coverage for them and would not, and they would be able to work from home with some form of, some form of pay leave probably for long-term disability. So we really do need to try to get as many of our employees who can telework, that's in combination that they need to be able to access that. Otherwise, we're going to be paying for, in addition to caring about the health and safety of our people, we're going to have to go out and get a whole bunch of additional subs to cover those classrooms because we have a bunch of staff that we're also paying that are at home on leave.
They will be necessarily trained as well, at least.
The, like the, the actual subs that we might bring into some, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. I would prefer that we, that we honor our trained members of our community who do a great job every day. Who have asthma or diabetes for some reason are just at higher risk. We can take care of them and still allow them to impact and teach our kids. I think it's a, as much of a win-win as we can have in this kind of situation.
So initially, before, you know, before Friday and after Friday, last year's speech. But before you guys had initially said that we were going to try to do an online option for people who might have, the students might have a medical condition, family might have that. So this declaration on Friday, it's kind of lasting a long time. The declaration on Friday kind of opens it up that it's not just going to be limited to people, the students or family members who might have a health condition, but it really opened it up to whoever wants their child to stay in mold in AKD but also wants them to ride out or to virtual.
That's right. That's right. It's, it's choice. Which of these options do you elect for your child? The, what you're proposing, which is the hybrid model or 100% online learning for a semester?
And we only start to kind of bump up against an issue, these quotes, is that we start approaching 50% of people who want to choose that online option. Is that where, is that not the solution for people who are on, right? You have to worry about.
Yeah. You sort of take out of the, of the, of any sort of calculations of people that opted into the all-online. And then you're saying, oh, you opted into the hybrid model or whatever, it's for everybody else model. All of those kids need to.
But we may, we may get 52% of people who want to be remote.
That would be okay. I mean, you'd have to, I'd have a lot of fun with staffing. And then looking around with the horrifying space. I, I will tell you the thing that I don't know now, but we're talking about surveys to staff tomorrow, surveys to families about choice for their kiddos later this week. And we're, you're going to have to figure out how do we try to balance the number of staff who are unable, I think, talked specifically about teachers and associates. Here, teachers and associates who need to be from home with the number of kids that need to be at home. There is, there is a possibility that we will have more staff who have a medically documented reason why they can't come to work than we have students who choose that option. And then we're going to need to get creative to figure out how we protect the health and the safety and the legal rights of those employees without leaving our building short-staffed. I don't know what the answer to that is yet. First, we're going to take a look at the scope of what.
How fast can you get the surveys, Hallie?
They're going out tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
We just wanted to talk to you all before anything went out.
No, no, that's good.
And we haven't done anything with surveying people, what they would want as far as the three choices before. So we don't have any that, hopefully have a houseful.
I guess I say the good thing.
Well, keep in mind, those three options were never about to be a survey of working fur.
True.
When they came out, they were meant to be, we're school district needs to be able to respond in one of these three ways. So that's why we didn't. The other thing I would mention to you is that this remote learning, I think it's going to be a great option and I'm glad we can open it. There are some things that, just like acceleration in math, you know, it's a great thing. You just have to know the whole story. So some of the pieces of that whole story will be, it's a semester commitment. Just today in the state webinar with the DE, they have given us guidance on what kind of implications this has for eligibility if students are involved in activities. So that's something for families to think about. We also don't know, we know that all of our core coursework will be able to provide that. Keeping in mind that, wow, let's take a fourth grader. My fourth grader may attend Ashland Ridge. The teacher that they're paired with may teach at Southeast, that means a remote learning environment. So it's not necessarily the teacher they were thinking they might have. I know we haven't released class lists, but they generally know who the next grade level teachers are. And the other thing to think about that is in terms of coursework, our ability to offer, I think at the high school level, there's 563 different courses. And certifications come into play here. And so we may not be able to offer the full gamut of courses based on certifications and so forth. We've got to work all those details out, once we know who are our families that want to remote learning, who are our staff that need the remote working environment. And there's going to be gaps, right? But we'll find a way through those gaps as well. It's just more technical that the expertise for a particular course at those other levels is. Just think D-MAT, for example, the more there is to work through. So I just, I want to be careful that we're looking at the breadth of that when we're talking about that with families. Yes, it's an awesome thing. Yes, families will be able to choose that for any or one of their children.
So you may, we may have limitations on what courses we can offer. Because like last year, one of my children took the construction course. Can't do construction from home. I know there are students who have done like advanced computer program courses and were unable to do those because the program license say it's only non-school computers. No. Is that a case where if a kid wants to take a class, they are forced to be onsite? Or is it that in the interest of equity, you're not going to have class at all?
It mirrors, well, a couple of things. Again, we have to look at every need here. It's hard to talk about it without speculating this time because of the number of different courses, but we'll have to look at that. I can tell you, let's say for example, that a child is going to take course. Well, that's going to look different.
Well, that's gonna look different whether you're onsite or virtual. Are you a part of a choir when you take it? I mean, you have to think through just what that looks like, right? So, um. I would say we're gonna need to look at those certifications, we're gonna have to look at each course and determine to what degree can we provide this online? Because their, our community colleges aren't going online, they're figuring out a way to do some of this, so we'll, we'll try to do that. It may make more sense for us in some cases to say to a student, you know what? Why don't we postpone taking that this semester, move to next semester, move to next fall, like we can do some of that with our non-seniors. So we've got some options in there, I just wanted to make sure you understood. That it's not just this simple match. I said to someone today in a group today that this is like putting a ten thousand piece 3D puzzle together. Like, it's, there's a lot of pieces that have, we have to work through in the course of the next couple of weeks.
So for, so for like a parent whose kid may have already made their schedule for this fall. They can be assured that. Well, if, if being looked at, if being worked on, they don't have to think, oh, I thought I was.
Well, and the other thing is. Um, based on the surveys in some of our partners, partners, districts in the metro we created it. I don't know of a single district around the metro that had more than twenty percent interest in the online. Um, course, then I'm over. Looking at Katie, because Katie's been in those meetings too, I think I did have one that was more than twenty percent, so. That's, that's a relatively new. Okay, so we're moving into remote learning is what Darren's saying to me, thank you. Um, let me. Right, we would call required continuous learning, so I have to do. So if you go to the section that's titled academic services, if you've got that bookmark in front of you. Click on that and I'm gonna jump into required continuous learning. So I think this is a really important one to look at in, in detail because. I know it's human nature, but we all kind of picture this like what we experienced last spring. This is not like last spring. Last spring, the whole state was, whole nation was caught off guard on this, right? So we all did the best we could, we all entered this voluntary enrichment opportunity, whatever we call it, I can't even remember. Out of my brain. But this will look very, very different because this is required continuous learning, it is remote learning. One of the things that I think illustrates that, and just while I'm going through here, let me say that our intent. Is to share this plan publicly Wednesday of this week, so I know we've got folks tuned into the work session going, oh, let's get that document. Um, we wanted to share it with you and discuss it the week before it went live, so. We um, hope to have it out Wednesday to the community before the forum so that they can read through it in detail as well. But let me just pull up for a second. Um, an example of our K five continuous learning schedule. Um. And again, Amy had worked with the elementary DLT, Amy DiMar, her director of elementary education. Worked with our elementary DLT through the course this summer. And um, developed this schedule for what a typical schedule might look like. And you can um scroll down to see um different grade level ones if that's of interest to you. I would also mention. Spot here. Um, the secondary one. Is also linked under that required continuous. And what I want to mention in terms of uh the two schedules is that both of these schedules were vetted through our, our implementers across the system. Um, our DLT spent a lot of time talking about them and looking at them. We also looked at them vertically to make sure that there was alignment and certainly no misalignment. And where we needed to be different because of our grade levels that we serve were different. But we can speak to why they're different. Where I can tell you that we were very similar in, for example, making sure we built in time for the grab and go lunch, the pack and pick up process. We wanted to make sure that if we're in a remote learning environment, um, that our families have time to go and get. Darren's giving me the one minute. Um, so, um. The only other thing I think that would be important for me to mention to you. Um, especially as we look across all three of our, our plans, is the table of contents in these three. Um, modes, very similar. You're gonna see the definition of what the mode is, the schedules and what they would look like in that mode. Roles, responsibilities of students and families. And then the considerations of the key areas of our academic work. Curriculum, culture, assessment, recording. Um, and you can see that by grade level, and then. Um, the last three areas would be related to our special programs, how do we continue to serve and need special programs? Our special education services, how do we do, continue to meet the needs there? And then any special operations we need to consider, is that particular? Any questions in general about required continues?
I have an attendance question. You have a pretty well laid out schedule. But if you don't have a kid, a parent at home who can adhere them to this schedule, if there's going to be flexibility that way. When I come home at three o'clock at my job, I can go through something like this, or do I have to find a way? For my child to be online, or my adolescent school child to be online at that, at those particular times in order to.
Attendance, I should say, I know there was a lot of conversation by the group.
I, I know that's a huge concern for families.
Oh, maybe a line, okay, well, but um. Yes, we, two different ways of looking at attendance. Um, so continuous learning can be synchronous or asynchronous, right, live or is working on their own. If it's synchronous, live, obviously attendance, I can see you on the screen, so I can take attendance. Um, we're also considering um. Kids completing a task or evidence of learning on their own for the asynchronous part, they could fill out a survey. Um, log on that day, do their work, fill out surveys, and they were engaged, and then obviously we have the artifact. Which is the work for that day or the evidence of their learning to show that they were engaged. So two kind of different ways in elementary that we're collecting attendance, one is do we see you on the screen? And if not, um, did you log on that day or that week? I don't know what to say.
And is there the availability then for them to kind of. Be back on what they may have missed during that timeframe? You know, I mean, they may, they may have, you know, technology, their internet may have. Right, and the neighborhood issue, like, oh, neighborhood might proper. Or is the sheer force of all of these children in town being online at the same time, potentially? But I, I mean, I know for me, that's, that's a concern, it's like, you know, how do I get my kid when I'm not at home? You know, elementary doesn't, you know, they may not have as much of a, say, in it as like an older, you know, secondary childhood. You know, if they're not able to get that live, that synchronous part of it. How do they get that back?
Yeah, we, we'll work with families with that, and I think attendance, or even begin like on a weekly basis as opposed to daily. If there are issues, things that are troublesome, we'll have assistance to do that.
And so if they have those questions, concerns, who do they reach out?
Um, yeah, so in the, in.
You slide your mic closer.
Yeah, if they have questions or concerns, uh, who do they reach out to if they're, can't get on or online or whatever?
Yeah, and in the document we have, there's a table on there for teacher, or student roles, responsibilities and parent roles, responsibilities. We added a section um with who to call um to help troubleshoot things. So we want their first defense to be their teacher. But there's other people there that resources that are providing to help them as well.
All right, I'm going to move us then to um. The hybrid learning. Again, when you jump into that document, you're gonna see those same um table of contents items. Again, the schedules piece I know is probably of most interest, and as you'll recall, we had a couple of drafts. Um, a twenty-five percent, a fifty percent, both of those. Um, we need to go back to the drawing board on the fifty percent, those are not viable based on what the governor shared on Friday. But we believe it's a pretty easy refinement here. Um, we just need a little time to look through it, we've already put together some options, I think we have eight to ten ideas there. And we're gonna get those tomorrow with some groups, by the end of this week, we'll have a true fifty percent. Um, as defined by our governor, but it'll be very similar, like I said, to AP and DJ. Um. Again, the roles and responsibilities, and then the grade level considerations, followed by our special programs and special education services. What questions related to hybrid?
A question that's specific to hybrid, involves hybrid, what? So when you, you sign up for online, you've signed, you committed to that for a semester. Uh, what if someone signs up for hybrid and there's? Free outbreaks in the first six weeks and they're like, nope, I'm done. Can you go from hybrid to online mid semester? Or is hybrid a semester commitment as well?
So, um, that helps me, Amy, in thinking about how to clarify this. The remote learning is an option we're gonna provide to families here to sign up in the next ten days, two weeks. After that, the district determines the mode in which we will enter the school. So you guys will make that decision. In other words, families won't get to choose, oh, I think I want hybrid, oh, I think I want full onsite. This isn't a, a menu of options to families. The only option families have is to select that remote learning environment for their children for one semester. We can revisit that for second semester, we can do that this fall when we start to see what, what potentially is happening related to the pandemic. Um, but certainly it's a commitment for one semester. We will need to decide what our mode of learning will be as a system to start this school. So opting out of hybrid at that point isn't an option. Um, if a child develops an underlying health condition some point in the year going into remote, we'll work through that, we certainly need to make that.
And in the same vein, we, we could talk about. A tipping point to being fully remote or a tipping point to. Going from hybrid to full time sometime during the school year?
Yes. I've got, in just a minute, I, I can share a little bit about that. And the governor is um indicating, the department of that is indicating that the first week of August. They plan to share metrics with school districts about um those types of decisions, so. I'm optimistic, or a lot more.
But just for clarification, whatever we decide for the brick and mortar. Once a family has committed, they've said no to online. They cannot, let's say they get scared or concerned, they cannot, they're still forced to go into the. For that semester.
Yes, we're gonna have a window of time for families to apply for that.
Yes.
In order for us to resource appropriately with staffing and all of that, we have to have them make that decision and then stay with it for that semester. Okay, um, in order to make sure we have all the staffing needs met and, and all the materials needs and all of the other pieces come together, yeah, we'll have to make that decision.
And you gotta move on.
Okay. Well. Okay, the last one, well, that, the last one is really what we all get up coming to work every day wanting to do, but that is onsite. I can tell you, every, the heart, every educator in this district right now would like nothing more from all of us to go away. Let us walk into buildings, which we do really, really well in AP. That's not the reality we're in, so, um, the traditional onsite, when you click into that document, you're gonna see. Very little detail related to schedules, why is that? Because we know how to do schedules in a traditional onsite. You're gonna see um very little in student roles and responsibilities, why is that? Because we have student handbooks that guide all of that. So this is a very brief um section. However, where it gets very complicated very quickly is in how we operate. And we're in a full, long, traditional hundred percent um model to open the year. The, the logistics and the details related to keeping our kids and our staff safe are new ones. And so, um, you can see the thinking that's gone through, really, as you think of the scope of a day that a student would experience or a staff would look. What does it look? That's where there's a lot of details and they all connect back to the overall public health section, which really is anchored in. Any questions?
Yeah. The only question I would have is, oh, that bottom portion of full-time school. It's gonna cost a lot more money and right now we don't have any additional money, but is there talk about it? I think there is, at the national level.
Yes, and we, we are making use of the CARES Act to the fullest extent, right, Jennifer?
What's, what's the maximum? Amount of desks or stations that can be in classroom to ensure proper social distancing?
Six feet is seven students plus a teacher in our standard classroom.
Which is not operationally.
Not with the way the, the governor took the twenty-five percent off. Our twenty-five percent would have, would have got us there, but not anymore.
So, so what, so what happens in between then? We see how many kids choose to, families choose to do online. See how many that leaves us with. And, and see how close we can get. Is that where kind of Melissa, the liability covered is where we have made our best effort? To distance as much as possible and we just can only do what we can do?
That's, that's correct, kind of spread people out as far as we possibly can, both within the classroom and using other spaces over the.
I bet there's a lot of, you know. Especially like the younger kids, you know, trying to cohort them in the classes when possible, just give them their movements. Every option, see if they wanna try and restrict their access to as many unnecessary places as possible.
Correct, we're, we're balancing that with some new studies that talk about also air exchanging classrooms, so there's some benefit in having an elementary classroom, for example, go outside for recess. Some benefit probably in going to art class instead of having art class come to them. The incidental uh hallway. A lot less risky, but, but we want to get the air turned over as fast as we can within the classroom itself.
So for a class like, like band, maybe you're not gonna put a mask over a trumpet or a clarinet, so.
You would be surprised at what they're coming up with.
I'm sure it would be.
And practicing outside.
And practicing outside for now is, is very important, yeah.
So, but. That's only possible for like the first couple of months of school, the last couple of months of school, so.
Yeah, there's. There, there's been some fascinating science about uh music in particular, um, and there is not a simple answer that, that makes it work very well. And as a former band teacher, that breaks my heart, but it's just the.
Right, so, I don't know, I just. It comes, like, for me, hearing from all these, you know, parents and teachers who are concerned about safety, it's just like. It's like, how do you, how do you be consistent, you know, you say social distancing, you say wear masks. But how can you feasibly do everything that we've done before? And then, and still say, yes, we're gonna do everything we can. If you're, if you're, if you're, whether you're hybrid or whether you're full on school, like, I just don't, I just don't see how we can be consistent. And still offer school as normal, even in a hybrid model. And say, we're being one hundred percent safe and there is, there's no risks of coming to school.
That's not our reality.
Right.
Um, we are choosing from imperfect ones, none of these are perfect. And so, um, I guess that segues us nicely to where I feel. It's my responsibility um to share with you what, what I believe to be our next steps and what I believe to be best we can possibly do. It's certainly not optimal, it's certainly not even something we really want. But it's the best that we can do based on the summer study, all of the most recent research and where the numbers are going. So I see our next steps. First, we'll offer the remote learning option for all students, we'll get that information out to parents this week, parents will make that one semester commitment. We will finalize this plan this week, Samantha's gonna get her fingers in it and make it um really nicely readable and presentable for the public. Public facing, but also we're gonna make sure all our links are there and really a resource document for our teachers. We'll host our community forum, by the way, we'll mail that out, we intend to get it out to the community and on the website Wednesday of this week, so everybody can read it. Top to bottom, we'll host our community forum on Thursday where we'll share some of the details much like we've done tonight. And also, we are going through all of the questions and we've had a lot of them. Um, there's no way we're gonna answer every single individual question, I think we're upwards of four hundred. But we are grouping them and we will either, if. I think we're upwards of 400, but we are grouping them and we will either, if it's in the documents, we'll say that, or we'll respond. Um, and then we are excited about kicking off our parent family group tomorrow and Jesse and Samantha are going to lead that. And we have a um, robust set of questions and information we want to work with them around. So recommendations, and I previewed this, I think, for you in your board report on Friday. I recommend, we recommend, that we begin the 2021 school year in a hybrid model. The next part, I think, is probably most important. I think we go into our staff and our community to make that decision earlier than later. And we're ready. We can have a special board meeting next Monday night. We can um, vote on this and we can go. And we'll and we'll tell our teachers with clarity the direction they need to go. And I know, I know teachers in this district, once they know, oh, they're just going to go and they're going to make this absolute best experience for their kids they can. My recommendation then is that um, uh, we remain in that model, thinking is for six weeks. Generally speaking, our elementary is on a 12-week cycle. Our secondary has been on a six-week cycle. So if we commit that we're going to be in hybrid for six weeks, to determine the next six weeks, we do that at the four-week mark in the first six weeks. In other words, giving our community two weeks of time to know our next six weeks will look like this. Now, we won't know when the state decides to go all remote. We won't know when we have outbreaks. We're going to have to respond to all of those things, but we can be as thoughtful as possible with our community by setting up a structure like that. I think, and here's my rationale, and I have all three stakeholders here. I think this supports our students, first of all, they get to teach their teacher face to face. They, especially those little kindergartners who don't even know what to expect when they go to school. It also allows students to engage in those, in learning those routines and procedures and structures related to their classroom like they always do. What do I do with my papers? Where's my take-home bag folder, whatever that might be. Um, but in addition, if you think about all of that public health information, we have a whole range of routines and structures and that we need to teach our kids how to do that they've never done before. Masks, yes, but what about hand sanitizing? What about walking this way or that way? We do that well in our elementaries, our secondaries, we've got some new routines we have to create. But we've got a lot of work to do and that will keep our classrooms to 15 or fewer for our teachers to train up our kids on how to do those things, using their Chromebook, for example. This supports our teachers, again, because our teachers want so desperately to get back to those relationships with their students. It's been since March, since they've been live with their kids. It lets our teachers start teaching those routines, procedures, and structures, the ones they know well and the ones they're worried about. Um, it allows them to start developing, and this is what will happen here. Do you know our teachers as well as I do? The minute we make this decision on, what is that, July 27th? Our teachers are going to go. They're going to start putting together, what am I doing when I'm onsite with kids? What am I doing for them asynchronously? So when they're offsite, they are engaged as well. Because remember, in that A-Day B-Day model, teachers are planning both when kids are in the room and for when they're not in the room. There's work happening all of that time. They'll also be able to start setting up their classrooms and preparing for kids to come into the room. I also think this earlier decision supports our families. We know they want to have conversations with their kids about what school's going to look like. I know I would want that for my kids. We know they need to work with their employers. I know a lot of employers have gotten really creative with their their employees working offsite, setting up phased-in times, training off. So if we can let our community know, they'll be able to work with their employers in many cases. And also that the arrangements for childcare. Um, I think that's very, very important for our families to be able to have to. Um, last, I think if we could make this decision on the 27th, it will help us with those mitigation efforts we need to take according to the CDC, while also EMC has been really clear with us about what we need to do to keep our employees safe. It also positions us for any last-minute changes. If that guidance on how we make decisions comes out from the state the first week of August, or it doesn't, um, we will have it and we will be able to adjust. Um, I think that our teachers, by starting to create that hybrid content of asynchronous, if the state were to shut down and say, we got to go full remote, our teachers have started that work in that remote learning environment, they're just going to expand it, take it further. And I think this also, think about this, if we put out this information on the remote learning tomorrow or Wednesday, and if we could keep it open, let's just say through the end of the month, so by July 31st, we can make a decision on the 27th, that lets those families who are like, oh, I don't know, all those things I was sharing with you, they can think about, do I want to commit to a semester in a remote learning environment? Or because I know my child is going to start the first six weeks in a hybrid, and I know that the district is going to be watching that and communicating with me, I'm okay with them doing that. So I, again, timing on that really works nicely if you can make a decision on on the 27th.
Ooh, three minutes.
Um, I, you can tell I've been passionate about this because I just, I know you have heard from so many of our community members, parents, grandparents, um, teachers. And um, I appreciate the advocacy that I've seen in our community, and I'm new to this, you guys have such a better view than I. But I have just seen our community really be thoughtful and reflective in that advocacy regardless of the the direction that coming from. I I appreciate that they they care that much, so. Um, with that, you have a lot to think about over the course of the next week. I know we're going to have a special board meeting next week, for sure. Um, we have some other things to do as well. Um, because we need to start the traditional part of our meeting tonight, I'm going to suggest we pause, we take a five-minute recess to allow a restroom break, to allow those of you that want to go to your designated room for the webex, so we don't all interfere with each other, to make that move. And we'll start it at about 6:05.
Can I add a quick something? If anybody, because we do have a retarded portion of the agenda. So if anybody pops up with any questions, now then, they have another opportunity to ask those questions.
Anybody is in us, because I have questions, I didn't know where they fell.
Yeah, I have the same, I have the same. Thank, yeah, thanks, Lori.
Who's that talking?
Aaron, sorry, yeah, I I I'll save a couple of questions for that section too.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, I have some like, very like, specific things that didn't necessarily fit into the themes of this.
I do too.
Right. We can, we can save those and not have, this is, yeah, kind of part of the overtake.
I think that would be, yeah, I think that would be better just because then others, folks that want to listen in to the official meeting, starting as close to 6:00 each. Okay?
Thank you.
Aaron. Aaron, can you hear me?
Hey, Lori.
Yeah.
Just checking to see if you can hear me, you can hear me now.
I can, and my earbuds are working, so hopefully I don't have to play the mic juggling game with Jennifer.
That'd be great.
That would be great.
Hey, Lori.
Who's my name?
Yes, me, it's Deshira.
Oh, hello.
All right, I'll I'll come on screen while I'm talking. I didn't hear why everyone broke out. I heard Aaron's question and saying he would save it for later, but I didn't know why you all dispersed into your separate rooms.
Oh, just that way, um, the sound isn't the greatest.
Oh, yes, I I put a message up and nobody responded, I'm like, I'm struggling.
Yes, Samantha, Samantha was the only one who was able to manage the recording. And so she was the only one who was able to see, like, if you put a message up and.
Oh, yeah, I went to her privately, I was listening with everything I had. I'm like, Aaron, could you hear? I wanted to ask you that, but I was afraid.
I could hear okay, um, except for when Samantha was typing, um, I had to tell her to shush. Because her typing is so much, so loud.
It sounded like it was a fan. I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is hard, and then, yeah, so I'm glad you all.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I had a few people asking questions in the um, box that I and then I realized that it was disrupting for everyone else, so. Trying to.
Yeah, I I didn't want you to think that, you know, I appreciate you hosting and doing that. I said, she's probably trying to keep up with a lot of things, so I didn't put another message out, I was it's all good.
But it.
We survived.
Yeah, if you didn't hear what I had said at the very end, it was that if people had questions that they weren't able to get answered during that work session, you will absolutely be able to ask them when we get to the return to learn part of the
Oh, yeah.
Board meeting, okay.
I heard Aaron say, yeah, well, I was going to say the same thing, I'll save my question, okay.
Good. Samantha, are we on and live?
Yes, and I just left the recording playing. Of course, I need to add Ryan in really quick, if you can wait.
Oh, Amy's having a small issue on her computer, she's she's going to have to restart her computer. If we're okay with a couple of minutes.
Just take it out of your pay.
Yeah. Nothing worse than a technology snap on a time timeframe.
Yeah.
Glad it's not just me all the time.
Oh, it's always you, it's just other people too.
I know, I'm Mr. Technology.
If I'm not threatening to throw my computer at least one time during a meeting, it's not a good meeting. Well, what have you got? Sorry, I'm trying to see if she's, wants me to wait or not.
We can wait for her.
Hey, Lori.
Yeah.
While we're sitting here, when we get our updated recommendation, can we get a paper copy of that? It's so much easier to read.
The return to learn?
Yeah.
You can print, I mean, you can print it, right?
Oh, I could, but that just eats up here. Your printer and your ink.
Oh, I've gone through so much ink lately.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I'm going to request that. Are we open, are we on to the public right now?
We're being recorded.
Yes.
Okay, Amy said, go ahead, and, sorry, hold up here. Go ahead and get started. Um, we'll just go through stuff, so we already gabbled in, so next, um, may I have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with the amendment of item 6A, um, removal of Sarah Barthol from public comment, um, 7D, the amended personnel report, and 8B, the inclusion of the handbook executive summary attachment. Motion. Any questions on those?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Um, 8B, inclusion of the handbook executive summary attachment.
Thanks.
Um, this, who was the second on that, Jennifer didn't catch? Aaron was. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Alrighty, uh, we'll do pledge of allegiance. I have to sit though, I'm on my earbuds.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic
Republic for which it stands
one nation
One nation
under God indivisible with love.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Recognitions, I have none. Communications from the public. Amy's here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yeah.
Score. We've got Amy back. Okay, communications from the public. I was looking up for Samantha. She's not in the room. Samantha, who do we have? For any communications from the public?
I don't have any right now. I, I put a chat in the chat box for our attendees, just requesting that anyone wishing to speak, submit their name via chat.
And I.
So isn't there someone on the agenda?
That was the amend, amendment on the, I'm sorry, Amy, you weren't here for that. The person who was on the agenda had contacted the, the office and said that they were unable to be here tonight. And so they just asked that their name be removed.
Okay.
Sorry, I had a text from somebody who was wanting to speak, and I'm trying to tell them how to do it. Another joy of technology.
Yeah, Lori, if it's the same person that you told me before, I can go ahead and unmute them.
Three-way technology. They're indicating to me that they're having trouble with their phone letting them. I'll tell that, I'll tell them you're trying to unmute them.
Okay, Mike, I have unmuted your phone. I'm not sure if you can hear us.
He, he says it's still unable to work, but, um, to just go on.
Okay. I don't, the other, I don't have any other submissions. I did just have someone ask me a question, so I'm going to see if they were wanting to speak for public comment, I suppose.
Okay, we'll wait for them. Give people a chance to ask if they can make it work. Well, I'll give a little grace to the technology, right?
They, they've requested that I, I read their question off, because they have a lot of background noise at their house right now.
Sure.
It's, it's just one question, so it would fall within the, the three-minute window, and I don't know, Lori, if you would want, need to read, read that little portion.
Um, if you are able to get their, I'll read it. While I'm reading it, if you're able to get their, I guess, their name and address. That's the part that, that we asked them. Do you have their name?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll say, on behalf of the board, I would like to invite, if you can just tell us their name.
It is Jill, and Jill, I'm so sorry, Jorkland?
Okay, we, well, I'll say step to the mic, but submit her question with comments about items of interest or concern. We'll ask that you state, on behalf of her, her name and address, and then limiting comments to three minutes, so we can keep them meeting, moving in a timely fashion. Remember, Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. And thank you for your support of our district. If you would read her question, if she's good with that.
Sure. So it's Jill, Jill, 1007 Northwest 37th Street, Ankeny. And, and she was inquiring why staff would be required to report in the buildings in the event that we go to virtual learning.
I know we can't respond directly, but can I say that Dr. Lindeman or somebody from the administrative team can address that question during our return to learn segment of the board meeting? Is that appropriate? I'm getting a nod, so we will make sure to address that, that question during that part of our board meeting, if that is okay. Thank you for sharing. And Samantha, that was the only one that you had?
There's a question popped up in the Q and A section here that I can see. I don't know what that constitutes.
Yeah, so I guess, really quick for our community joining in, if you are wishing to speak publicly, if you can indicate that desire in, in the chat box, and then, Lori, I don't know how, I, I, I'm trying to honor the, the meeting rules that we're under. And so I don't know if you want us to just say that we're, we'll be talking more about return to learn later in the agenda, and if their questions aren't addressed, they can submit it to be answered at the community forum as well.
That's probably the most appropriate use of our, of our agenda, since we don't have the ability for that. But we will be having a return to learn section, like Samantha said, in, later on in the meeting. Statements and questions that people have right now absolutely can be sent to, I mean, we'll share the links for the community forum that you can submit your questions. We'll share the links that you can directly contact the return to learn committee. I know there's already a link online for that. And then people can always, you know, directly email the school board, and we'll try to forward your emails to the people who can best answer those questions as well. So just in the interest of not having the ability to respond directly to people's questions right now, we'll have to move on. But we will provide ways, as many ways as possible, to make sure that you can submit those questions and get them answered in a relatively timely fashion. The next item is our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Does anyone have questions on the consent agenda with those amended items from earlier?
I have a question about the, let me get my wording here, open enrollment. So I looked at the open enrollment, and it looked like some families had opted for the statewide online schools, and enrolled kids. Can, can families change their minds now that they know Ankeny has an online option? Because I myself applied for our daughter, because I didn't know what was happening. So. Is that an option for them? And I don't know these families. I was, I just, when I saw, I thought of that question.
Excellent question. Way that anytime a family chooses open enrollment, they have the ability to rescind that open enrollment to that school district at any time and return to their resident district. So, find tomorrow and be back in Ankeny if they so choose. They could do it in, in August.
Okay, thank you.
I just was curious why the district calendar's on here again. I feel like we've looked at it a lot, but what exactly was going on there? I don't have a problem with it. I just was curious why it's on there.
It was passed, I think, in January or February. There was a note that passed to bring it back later this summer when we updated the hours of instruction. So the calendars have been updated now with the hours actually on them, but the calendar hasn't changed at all.
Does that tell you what you need, Katie? Fantastic. Any other consent agenda, consent agenda-related questions? Awesome. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, opposed? Great, everybody. Thank you. Now we're gonna get to the meat of the meeting. Information only. We have a presentation on the elementary education. I assume, Dr. Dittmar?
Yes, Dr. Dittmar is going to be sharing her screen, or Samantha, maybe, and then Amy will take over.
Great.
I'm sorry, I need to make Amy a panelist, really.
All right, good evening. Just to do a quick sound check, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you tonight an update of, kind of a year in review of elementary education from the 2019-20 school year. So our first piece of data that I want to share with you, and I believe Dr. Lindeman shared this with you a couple weeks ago at a board meeting, but the first item that we look at in regards to data is our district vision card. It's part of our strategic plan. And that district vision card has a metric, which is in regards to reading, because our goal, if we are going to prepare every learner for a lifetime of personal success, we think it's important that students are developmentally fluent readers by third grade. And so, again, this is just a review, but we have increased the number of students that are meeting the benchmark on our reading fluency assessment, and from 81% in the spring of 2018, and to our last data point, which was winter of 2020, which was at 83%. Obviously, the other metric on this district vision card is the statewide assessment, which we did not take this past spring, because we do not have data on that assessment. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about standard work here in Ankeny schools. So we have six items that we believe are best practice in education, and if we can do them really well, again, we will prepare our learners for lifelong personal success. And so as I go through this presentation, I'm gonna hit on each of these pieces of standard work and how they apply to the elementary schools. So the first one would be the guaranteed and viable curriculum. As you all know, we have several students that have in-district transferring between our schools, especially in elementary kids move, especially every three years as we open up a new elementary school. So we believe that we need to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum in order to meet the needs of our kids. So, and Samantha, you can go ahead and forward it to the next slide. So two ways that we are, we worked on that this past school year. One is by creating a work habits tool, which is a tool that will help guide us when giving students feedback on standards that are related to those executive functioning skills in schools, such as organization readiness, accountability, collaboration. As we created this tool this past year, we wanted to ensure that it is aligned with our 612 counterparts. And so now we have a work habits tool that is K-12 with this similar standards. And then it also defines those standards and gives feedback to our students and our parents on how their child is performing in relationship to those standards. So that will be new this coming year, that we will implement this fall. The other item was to achieve this idea of a guaranteed Bible curriculum is through our curriculum leadership teams and the curriculum review process. And this past year, our K-5 social studies team, our K-12 music, and our K-12 PE health teams met regularly to prioritize standards, which are now aligned to the Iowa Core and to the national standards. We also identified resources to support teachers in implementing those standards. And then we want to also make sure that our teachers are defining proficiency in a similar manner, and so creating those assessment pieces to support the implementation of that work. So these are the main areas that we focused on this year. Again, K-5 social studies will, all three of these, actually, music and PE, will all be implemented this fall in our elementary schools. And the next item in our standard work is MTSS, which stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support. And in this area, we continued our professional learning around the topic of literacy instruction. In our elementary schools, we use the literacy workshop model to deliver reading, writing, and phonics instruction, which means that we spend some time in whole group instruction, but actually more time in small group differentiated instruction or one-on-one instruction, so that we can meet the individual needs of our kids. We also, for the first time, implemented a phonics, a core phonics program. We have not had that before here in Ankeny schools, so that word study, we believe, is an important part to MTSS. So we know that we're going to meet the needs of at least, at a minimum of 80% of our students through having this strong workshop model and literacy, as well as a core phonics instruction to supplement that. We also implemented a vocabulary, some vocabulary instruction with our third through fifth grade students as well. So as you know, our year was cut short, so we don't have a lot of data to support how the implementation of this went. But so we'll continue to work on that in the fall. We do use several different assessments to give us feedback, you know, along the way to see how kids are doing, so that we can make those mid-course adjustments and differentiate that instruction as needed. The next parts of standard work is PBIS, which is also refers to positive behavior interventions and support. PBIS is implemented in all of our schools, K-12 here in Ankeny. And what that focuses on, universal expectations. So we're all speaking a common language to our students, no matter what adult they're interacting with. It also focuses on social, emotional, mental health of our students. And then we provide additional supports for any students who are displaying at-risk behaviors. And then we use a tool. It's called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, or also known as TFI. We use that tool, that assessment, to give us feedback on our implementation of PBIS and how we are doing. Our goal for PBIS is to decrease problem behavior, increase instructional time. And this is, in our strategic plan, this is measured through reduction of office referrals. And as I said, our students also are provided with additional supports and resources through PBIS, such as individual counseling, mentoring, and behavior intervention plans. And then also want to talk a little about PLCs. We've been implementing PLCs, professional learning communities in our schools for many years now. And so we're continuing to work on the implementation of those PLCs. And so we have created a innovation configuration map. Again, this is a tool to give feedback to our teachers and our administrators on how well we are implementing this, and are we making a difference? So we're asking teachers to work collaboratively throughout the week in order to look at data and meet the needs of kids. And so this tool, this innovation configuration map, gives us some feedback and some guidelines to ensure that we're implementing them at high levels. So we're continuing to work on this piece of standard work. And then next, just thinking about looking ahead. It's a little hard to remember life before COVID here in the elementary world. But, you know, that's been our focus since March, and I think that's gonna continue to be our focus next year. While we want to, yes, get better at implementing those standard work pieces that I just talked about, we also know that we have a more immediate need, and that would be to care for the health and safety of our students and staff. And then, as you just saw in the work session, we are really tuned in to operationalizing that return to learn plan at the elementary level. Some additional items of interest, just to let you know, other things that we're working on in elementary school. Again, that guaranteed viable curriculum, we hope to start to roll out math. We have not had a math curriculum review here in Ankeny, I believe, for at least four, eight years. So it's time to review and prioritize those standards and create those assessments, identify resources to support math instruction. We will also continue the implementation of the K-5 work habits tool, and, and really just all the highly effective practices that we know within that MTSS system that I spoke about. And then also continue our implementation of Leader in Me. This year, we will be implementing Leader in Me in all 10 elementary schools, as well as rolling it out in our 67 buildings at Prairie Ridge and Parkview. And I think that Leader in Me piece will really be a great component to the social, emotional needs of our students, families, and our staff, as there's really a lot of focus on individuals and becoming the best versions of ourselves. So with that, that was just a real quick overview of the work from last year, and then what we're looking forward to this year. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I saw Erin's hand first, so we'll start with him.
Do you know, is the math curriculum?
Do you know, is the math curriculum assessment going to be coupled with the secondary? When we did this a few years ago, looking at, you know, when I was first on the board, we consolidated all the elementaries into one curriculum because we weren't at the time, if you could think about that back then. But, but there was always this transfer into sixth and seventh grade and the curriculum that we've chosen in terms of the follow-through, the language, the vocabulary, the way we do things, you know, there was everyday math. And then we used more of a traditional method, textbook in sixth grade, if I recall. I don't know where we are with that, if we have have that coordinated together.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So we will work, it'll be a K twelve review process for math. And that will be under the guidance of Carol Eddy, who is our director of curriculum. But yes, we will prioritize standards, we will identify, again, those assessments and identify a resource to support K twelve and paying really good attention to the vertical alignment and making sure that, you know, we do have a lot of transitions here in Ankeny between fifth, sixth, you know, and seventh and eighth and into high school. And so we will have vertical conversations to make sure that there is alignment and it's fluid and flexible for our students.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron, I would just say, like, having just finished a math review myself, there's a lot better secondary resources out there than there were six or seven or eight years ago.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. And I know we were looking at, you know, a dip in, you know, basic, the general assessments and testing in math and looking at perhaps that was one of the reasons, just not a lot of continuity and looking to create better continuity. So, good.
Jim, I saw you pop up.
Yeah, just a question for Dr. Dittmar. Just I know in elementary, there's been some conversations about consistencies as far as math instruction because a few schools have been kind of doing some extras, math PD and kind of gone on a different tangent. So with this review, will we kind of get everyone back in line so that no matter what school you're at, you're, if you move, you have the same instructional practices for mathematics?
Yeah, absolutely, Jim. That is definitely one of our focuses. We, again, the whole definition of guaranteed Bible curriculum, we want to make sure that we ensure the same opportunities for all kids, no matter what school they're in. So yes, going through this math curriculum review will recalibrate that. We are also going to front load it with some professional learning or what is best practices for instruction in math will kind of ground our conversations in that common learning so that we can prioritize and, and again, recalibrate and get everybody on the same page. So, yes.
Thank you.
Katie?
So I got two sort of unrelated questions. And this first question is not meant to be disparaging, but I'm genuinely confused because as Sharon presented professional development last month, it felt very teacher-led or individualized. And this presentation led me to think the elementary was doing very similar professional learning. So help me kind of reconcile the differences there.
Yeah, I think it's, there's, it's a delicate balance. So as a district, we provide this framework, that first kind of puzzle piece that you saw there on the first slide with those items of standard work. We give some, some general guidelines that we want schools to align their work with, obviously, along with goals and strategic planning and things like that. But we give schools the autonomy to identify what their need is aligned within our, you know, district and building goals and those standard work pieces. So one school might be trying to improve their PLCs, one other school is working, you know, on PBIS, whatever that might be. So it still fits within the same model, but we do, we do give some choice to the building level. I will say, moving forward, that we're probably going to tighten up on that a little bit, just given the situation that we're in. You know, and we're going to give kind of the big focuses of social, emotional learning and improving instruction in the online environment. So there, it won't be as autonomous, I guess, if you will, moving forward.
And just from a high level, walk me through how buildings make those choices and how that's driven by student data.
Yeah, so each school obviously has an ILT or instructional leadership team. They spend summertime, you know, in a retreat or planning to look at their building data, you know, on various assessments. And they, through that data review, they identify what areas their school still needs work in. And then they kind of write their own professional development plan, again, within the parameters of our, of our district goals and our strategic plan. It gives them the autonomy at the building level to respond to their data and meet the needs of their staff and their students. So that's done throughout the year, you know, and their Wednesday mornings can be aligned to that work. But I would just say they use their building data and district data to make those plans.
And then just my, I guess, my last comment, and I've, I've said this in the past and I'll continue to say it. I worry that as a board, we only look at one goal level at the elementary. That worries me that we don't get an opportunity to kind of see the whole system and what that's looking like. And I just think we, if we choose to revisit a strategic plan, I just really think it's important, we're looking at our subgroup data to make sure that we have equitable practices and that there are not pockets of students who are unintentionally falling through the cracks. I just think that's a really important practice for us to take into consideration. So, that's it.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that.
Did anyone else have a question for Dr. Dittmar?
I did. I wanted to follow up on what, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
I wanted to follow up on what Katie just said. And she talked about the data and making sure that we don't have people falling in the cracks. Have we even looked at that at all yet? And I don't know if this would be specific for Amy or if someone else is better to answer that question.
I mean, yeah, I would say, and obviously Jen, you can jump in here if you'd like. I would say, you know, at the building level, I was prior to this year when we had some subgroup data. We, we are very much aware of kids that aren't, aren't meeting the benchmarks or aren't proficient. And so we are trying to partner groups of kids with resources in order to, to help them grow and to get them to where they need to be. Our subgroup data now might, is probably somewhat limited to what was the Iowa assessments and what they provided. And so I know, working with Jen Redeman, who was our data specialist and working with the data hub, what are some other ways that we can bring subgroup data into that piece so that buildings have that data at their fingertips? So, yeah, we have looked at subgroup data, but I don't know that it's on a real deep level because it is only with the Iowa assessments and that one data or that one assessment. So I think this is an area that we can definitely improve in.
Okay, are we adding to, I know that we have so much on our plate and I'm not saying this in a way to say, okay, another thing that you have to do tomorrow. But are we aiming to do that before we return for school so that we can cover some of those areas for the students who would be on the other end?
I would say yes. I know, again, I just had a conversation with Jen recently, Jen Redeman, and she is, is gathering that data for us. I think the challenge that we have right now is we don't, we have limited data, given the year that we just had. We didn't take the state assessments, we didn't take the fast bridge assessment. So, again, something that we, I don't know, we'll have it for the start of the school year, but as we start collecting more evidence, it's something we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
To Sharon, if I could just add real quickly, I do think that looking at data, especially from a, from a fifty thousand foot view is an area we can grow so that we look at how our program is serving the needs across the system by grade level, by subgroup, by content. So I have asked Jen Redeman, who's our data, data manager, data specialist, to put together a five-year historical view of our programs, of the data sets we have. And within that, she is going to pull that also by subgroup so we can take a look at it, again, programmatically across our pre-K twelve system, math, reading, science, social studies, behavior, everything, and look at how have we been doing and where are the places we're falling short? And then we need to dig deeper into the data to see specifically what's happening, what do we need to do to change? So it is an area of growth for us, no doubt. More to come.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, I know that we all have a rock on our hands, but there's a great area of opportunity and given the situation, it makes that piece even worse for the students who have that need and who need us to be aware and actively figuring out how to bridge that gap. So thank you.
Oh, Jim had a follow-up. Okay.
Yeah, this is a follow-up to what Sher was talking about, and maybe this is again, probably for Amy. Amy, you know, the kids have obviously be, be five months by the time they get back in a month to school or remote or whatever. So obviously, there's going to be some gaps. Whatever grade they left, they're going to the next grade, but they missed a quarter at least of school. So assessments to start the school year would be critical to see, because some kids might have been really working hard on learning throughout the last five months, but I have a feeling a lot of kids are going to have a huge summer gap and they missed, you know, a quarter of instruction. So assessing and then figuring out where to go from there is probably the more critical issue than any year you've ever done it. So I'm just thinking about how that's going to look to start the year.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jim, and something that we're definitely planning for when students return. Trying to build in a way to get some authentic data that's timely and relevant. We, you know, typically, we start a school year by giving a battery of standardized assessments and reading and math. And while we'll still do some of those, we, I think what we plan to do is minimize those a little bit and spend more time on getting to know kids and reading with them one-on-one and getting feedback from them. And, and, you know, maybe pre-assessing a unit, if you will, to see what they know so that we can accelerate that learning and fill those gaps. So, yes, we need to learn about our kids and see, you know, how they're walking in the door and how, you know, what kind of learning was lost and how we can make up for that. But it might not be through a standardized assessing plan like we typically have. But we still, you know, we are planning for that and we are planning for a way to, to see if I can gain back that lost instruction.
Thanks.
Dr. Dittmar, I had a quick question, if everybody else was, I didn't want to cut anybody off. But I'm kind of wrapping back around to the PBIS portion of what you had talked about. I know in the past, we've used the MTSS and the PBIS to actually kind of evaluate how our buildings were doing. As like, you know, there were goals on reducing the number of office visits, reducing the number of referrals, you know. I think we're all kind of expecting those things to be a little elevated with everything going on with, you know, the, the stress and, stress and emotional, I think, kind of just anxiety that our families and our students are kind of absorbing right now. Is there, because we want, we don't want to, you know, push to the side or not deal with, you know, those kids who have kind of might have these behaviors that are just, you know, a byproduct of what's going on around them. I don't, I guess I don't want our buildings to feel that as they're dealing with all of these, you know, maybe increased, you know, levels of interactions that our students have, that that's going to come back around on the other end and bite them when it comes to devaluation of how their buildings are doing. Because I know before it was always, the goals are to reduce the, the higher, you know, levels of services that some of these kids need. And, you know, just as a fact of what's happening right now, those may go up through no fault of what anybody's doing in the buildings, it's just kind of our environment right now. Are you guys pretty much planning and building that into what, what school kind of looks like? Because, you know, kids have been gone so long and, and all of that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that what you just said there, Lori, is probably at the forefront of most of our minds. How do we support kids as they re-enter school after five months off? What are those routines? What are those procedures? And most importantly, building their relationships. And we know that, yes, we talk a lot about social, emotional learning, but there's also trauma-informed care. We don't know, you know, what kids have experienced in these last few months and what they're bringing in the door. So we were trying to front load that information with our staff, giving everybody grace, kids, students and families, you know, all together. Because you're right, this isn't about discipline, this isn't about collecting data of office referrals and things like that. We have to extend grace and be patient and know that our kids have gone through a lot. So I do believe that our principals are planning for that and doing some of the work with their teachers in those first few days back to prepare for that success. And, and, and again, just give some grace with, with the data we normally collect, that it's, it's going to look different this year.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for Dr. Dittmar? Nope. Okay, thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, 2021 handbook executive summary. Who am I tossing that to?
It's me, Jessie.
Thank you, Jessie.
Yes.
I didn't have a name behind it, so.
I thought we removed that one.
I removed it, yeah.
We moved it from a few weeks ago to today as information in the hopes that we will be able to have these handbooks fully approved by the first day of school. They understandably have sort of taken a little bit of a backseat as we've been trying to figure out all of the other return to learning things. So you all have one document, which is a very sort of abbreviated executive summary of what we have done with the student slash parent handbook this year. And that is largely because not much, other than consolidating the handbooks, has changed. Just by way of process, my process has been to review all of the handbook language handbook provisions against current board policy and current law and make adjustments if things were out of step in the handbook and weren't fully reflecting the language that's in our current policy or the language that, that is required by law, particularly in the annual notices. There were a few places where we had to add a few words just to be fully compliant with the new law. The biggest change in terms of the student handbooks is instead of every individual campus having their own, which has led, I think, to some real questions about a consistency of implementation, equity fairness across the districts. And frankly, just from an operational perspective, it's hard to know which, if you're a kid and you're moving from one building to another, did the rules change? We've gone to a place where we now have one sort of core set of handbook expectations that apply across the district. And then there are addenda for elementary, the two different middle schools, the high school. And then we've incorporated the activities and athletics handbook. So it will be at one place and parents can go through online search, you know, for, for the relevant handbook provisions. And in that consolidation process, tried to go through and make sure it didn't sound like sixteen different handbooks meshed together. So there have been some minor semantic adjustments. If we were consistently, for example, saying parent guardian in one handbook and just saying parent in the other, I've tried to get some consistency across that language so it feels smoother and easier for the reader. There really isn't anything substantively that is different, other than efforts to, to align the handbooks with our current policy and with current law. So that's where we are in that process. And I will also say, I am anticipating that we will need to issue some sort of fifth, sixth addendum that is sort of that, here's the rules that actually apply during coronavirus, during return to learn. So that is also, I think, in the future, but we wanted to get these sort of standard handbook ready to go, at least as a starting point.
I think you're muted, Lori.
Did you have a follow-up, Aaron?
Yes, you, you hit most of what I was going to ask there, Jessica, in terms of whether or not we needed an online kind of section, because as Dr. Lindeman indicated earlier this evening, in, in the hopes that this might be an ongoing thing to use when we need it. You know, because we're going to make sure we have the right dress code for online learners and all that, so.
You'd be, as somebody who works from home for, for seven years, you'd be surprised what people wear when they don't realize they're on camera.
Kidding about that, but really, I think it's, it'd be good for us to do that. So that's all.
Agreed. I think like step one, at least from my perspective in that process, was let's figure out what the return to learn plan is. And then we can go back. And then we can go back, I mean, I don't know if there's some like omnibus language that we can insert at the end that says, hey, you know, these rules are suspended and the, the return to learn student handbook applies when we're in return to learn mode. But we will cross that bridge in the next couple of weeks, I think, once we are 100% certain or as close to 100% certain as we can be about what our model will look like next year. Same thing is true for employee handbook.
Yeah, and I think you have a good start of it on the expectation lists that you have in those plans. So it's, 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 it's there. Just need to make sure it's emphasized, so.
Incorporate by reference.
Did anyone have any questions about that? Great. Thank you, Jessie. 2021 Table of Organization.
That's also me. So here is what has changed about the Table of Organization. We approved it on the night that we accepted Bruce's resignation, retirement resignation his last night. And so I guess that was during the day. And so we now have language that is the interim superintendent is listed. And we also corrected some of the lines connecting people down from the interim superintendent. It used to look like everyone, like Darren worked for Dr. Lindeman and then everybody else worked for Darren. Might be true in reality, but that's not our org structure. So we just moved some of the connecting lines around to, to fix that. So interim superintendent changed the lines, everything else should be correct.
Okay, any questions on that? Fantastic. Revenue expenditure report, Jennifer.
Barely.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Echo here, so we're making that correct very good. And for us, that is the end of June. And there is quite a bit of activity that happens during period 13. I should probably make myself visible here as far as salary and benefit accruals. And then we have some accruals as far as payables, things that arrived here before June 30th, but we weren't invoiced for them until after July 1, and we will pay them after July 1. And other revenue received after July 1 that we will accrue back to June 30th because it was related to the fiscal year. So that's because we follow the modified accrual basis of accounting. And, and so we keep our books open for 60 days after the close of the fiscal year. And just wanted to update you after I did go ahead and take a look at, in addition to what we had for in the packet for period 12, I did go ahead and take a look at where we stand as of today. Dala has been very busy getting salary and benefit accruals booked so that we can claim our last bit of federal aid there. And it does look like we're going to land about 99% of our budget for salaries and benefits, which is very good. But as far as the non-personal portions of our budget, when I take a look at those, just for the reasons that we talked about the last time, there's timing issues with the FFNE for the purchase of equipment for heritage elementary furnishings and equipment for that. Some of the technology purchases, the K3 Chromebooks and things like that, that are not going to be received by the, were not received by June 30th and therefore become a next year, 2021 expenditure, as well as some of the curriculum purchases. So I'm still projecting about between a million, million and a half, maybe even up to $2 million surplus in the general fund, which is a flip from what we originally thought at the beginning of the year. So that is good news. So just to give us a little bit of buffer as we enter this current fiscal year, which is yet to be determined how, how things will turn out there as far as that goes in the general fund. Revenues, again, like I said, I feel like we're going to have that little bit of buffer. We do have some tuition and fees revenue still coming in for our special ed billings that went out on the 15th of July, as well as some of our federal revenue. We're working very feverishly trying to get the last bit of Medicaid claims submitted so that we can see that revenue before the end of August, as well as our, like I said, our federal grant claims were just processed in middle of July. So we should see those revenues come in before the end of August and we'll accrue those back to last fiscal year. Thinking we're going to land at about 137 million for revenues there, so. And then just to put your attention to the third schedule in the packet, that is including all the other funds. You'll notice that management fund, while we spent 197% of our budget, that was anticipated. We were planning to draw that balance down. We started the year at 7.7 million and we're down to 6.3. So we're just kind of trying to do that in a way to manage tax, tax rate, as well as draw that down a bit. Our PEPAL and our SAVE, you'll notice those have a little bit higher balances than probably what we anticipated just because we didn't go ahead and go forward with the Parkview Phase 2 renovations. So we do have a little bit of cushion there and expect to rebid that out soon in the coming months here. You'll notice that I'll draw your attention to the sales tax area. You'll see in the current month that $44.3 million in revenue, that is those bonds, the proceeds of the bonds that came in with the premium there. And then we had some expenses as well for the month to pay off existing save bonds as well. So just kind of wanted to point a few of those things out because they were a little bit different than we see at this time of year or month to month and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't know if this is a question for you or not, but in those Medicaid reimbursements, do we know is Medicaid gonna still approve those when those services are done in an online platform?
Well, we won't be able to bill for Medicaid during the quarter that we were closed. Remember, I, I talked about that. Now, going forward, if your question is forward looking next year, I would say probably not. We need to be providing those, we would be able to, obviously, for those services that are provided onsite for those students. And I guess it would depend on most of its behavior or medical. So I would say that highly unlikely that we would be allowed to bill for Medicaid for that in an online environment.
Even if we're still providing some semblance of services there, okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for explaining that third page because all I knew was those percentages felt really off to me, but I couldn't like make sense of why. So thank you for walking through that.
Absolutely.
Do I have anyone else? The eternal struggle of microphones. Alrighty, next item on the information only is board meeting format after July 25th. I know that's been a big thing because we had approved initially that our board meetings would be online and we had contact. I mean, that was the, was, am I saying it right, the mandate from the state? That changed our open meeting laws and.
I think I can share, well, the reason this is on the agenda, Lori, is that the proclamation, the governor ends on July 25th. However, we did, I don't know if Melissa is still in the boardroom with you or not. But Melissa, we did consult with her to ask about our ability to continue. Initially, we asked because we've had a very high attendance or audience in these virtual meetings. Samantha could tell you more about that, but I think it's been a great way to engage more of our community and something probably to think about in the future. We asked Melissa the question if we need to discontinue these when the proclamation ends. And Melissa's response was we still can hold virtual meetings based on the COVID-19 concerns as long as the board provides public access to the conversation, using Webex allows us to do. As long as we continue to publicly note, put a public notice to the community about the open meetings, which we always do, not an issue there. Keep minutes, we do that as well, and that the minutes include a statement explaining why the meeting in person was or impractical. So her, her guidance was if the proclamation expires, the minutes should read something along the lines of an electronic meeting was held pursuant to Section 21.8 to allow for the most public access because of the COVID-19 pandemic and social distancing limitations prevented the board from having an in-person meeting that would allow adequate public access. So Melissa could elaborate if you have more questions, I'm sure.
I don't know. I think we should just follow along with what we're doing in the buildings. You know, I mean, there's an attendance, I suspect, interest because of so many things going on and so much change. And then we just need to continue as we're still dealing with these ramifications, you know. We could think about moving to a bigger venue and, and having more social distancing and more people. But I think if we could just have Jennifer sit in the back of the room or somewhere, that might be the.
Not next, not next to me on the dais. That might be, we can work on that.
Yeah. You know, we did the work session. It, it was doable for, you know, those of us at the, in the at-home version of the game. Not ideal. This is pretty decent. We're, you know, we're all individualized and we can hear and see each other a little bit better. Not great necessarily for that, you know, interpersonal piece, but I, I, I think until, you know, we had talked way long ago about restructuring our format and having the work sessions and things like that. And I think that we, we, we did demonstrate we could do it, and I think that's good in terms of just the mechanics of it. I, I think we should just continue what we're doing for now. I don't know what other people's thoughts are.
Well, we had had some thoughts earlier about, you know, do the times of the meetings work for everybody? Does, you know, that kind of stuff? So since we're talking about this, now is kind of the opportunity to have that conversation about, you know, what, you know, is, is 5 o'clock what we need, you know? Do we put our work sessions at the beginning? Do we put them at the end? You know, do we hold them? I mean, we can think as out of the box as we need to. Do we hold our work sessions on off weeks? Where we can, aren't limited in time by an hour? Because there's a lot of times where an hour might not be enough. It's something to think about because that, you know, effectively might double the need of the board to be in any place and time and double the staff who come and accommodate it. But at the same time, in my mind, we're here to do the work, you know, and it, and it takes the time that it takes. What did, what do people, I guess, the board, I mean, and, and staff too? We might have limit, like I said, you know, I know Amy has brought up the, the time, the 5 o'clock timeframe, you know? Different boards have different needs about when our jobs, our real life jobs can accommodate, I guess, feedback from the board itself. You know, what are you guys thinking moving forward? Yes, yes, I can.
Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that because to the, about the time that Amy brought up. It was also brought up previously on the same night as city council. What happened with that while we're talking about scheduling our time?
I think it was just.
That's part of this.
That's kind of all of, all of this, you know, do, do we move? I know the only thing that, you know, we have the ability to switch when we have our board meetings. I mean, we can decide that, just whatever we decide. We may have to have a couple of things in between because the way we pay our bills is based on the first and the third.
Okay.
And so that would, we probably would need Jennifer to do some investigation. Because I know, I know when we change, when we combined our facilities and finance committee and changed the date that that met, that that had an effect on like how change orders were presented because of the way that they were voted on.
I remember that and I still remember Katie had a conflict because of her job and when they meet. But, I mean, what was ever concluded from that? Because in a couple instances, I've wanted to be part of the city council meeting.
Yeah, nothing, it's been put on hold until now.
I think COVID happened and now we're able to just have that discussion and kind of flesh those things out, you know? We kind of open that box of, you know, what do we want to prioritize in when it comes to, you know, public access? When it comes to board access, you know, we got to be able to get to our own meetings, you know?
The balance has always been the later you start, the later you're done, you know? And that's just one of those ramifications of it too, and trying to figure out which is, which is, you know, which is the lesser of those two, you know, conflicts.
We've had some long meetings.
I, I just, I, first of all, I value all of your health and safety. I want you to hear that. But if we're considering putting 1,500 kids in a high school and we won't put ourselves in a room, then I think we're sending a terrible message to our community. So I agree that it's been great that a number of our constituents have logged in, way more people are watching this, which is why I think when we had that work session, we talked about, could we put them on YouTube? Or I don't know, scream them or whatever that, that was. But, and again, I, I just, I value all of your health and safety. And so I think we have to consider social distancing and all those kinds of things. But I think there's valid argument in saying we're sitting in our separate rooms by ourselves, but we want to put all of our kids and our staff in a, in a building.
Yeah, I think the bigger challenge is the space that we have in the boardroom and public access is, that was really my only concern is making sure. Because, you know, it's worse than being in a classroom in terms of size. So that's my only consideration for doing, figuring out how we do this best. Says, not so much for us.
Well, I would piggyback on what Katie was saying. I would like us to all be in the same boardroom and we could distance ourselves. Still want us to have some sort of a public access like we've had the last two or four months because quite honestly, I think that's been a positive. And so if we can.
Just saying that experiencing that during the work session is way more difficult from an infrastructure standpoint because just hearing everybody is really difficult. And, and Deshara could attest to that as well. So that's, that's the difficulty. It's not, is the fidelity to the, like, is hard when we're not, we don't have an infrastructure for that. So we can figure that out. I would much rather be in person, so.
Okay. You all know about meeting times and meeting dates. And if there's nothing that has shown us that something can come along that can affect us as a community as a whole and that our citizens need to have access to us as well as the city council, this puts us primed in something that we are in the middle of. And our, our citizens need to be able to go to city council when they need to and be able to come and see us when they need to. So I think that's vitally important. A school district that has access to gymnasiums. We, finding a bigger spot shouldn't be an issue. Setting up some chairs, measuring them, whatever the case, shouldn't be an issue.
We've got closed session recordings, we've got, and we wouldn't be able to put the gym ones online very easily. So, I mean, there are some, some logistics there. Again, not that we couldn't, it's just not as simple as being in a space together.
We couldn't put, put them online in our schools that have Wi-Fi and.
No, no, I'm just saying, you're talking about being further away and it's hard enough being in one room and having the ability to hear everyone clearly. And then putting that in the gym is just going to exacerbate that challenge for the online part of it. So we can go just in person in the gym. I think we could do that. But then we'd have to figure out closed session times. Darren's shaking his head no, so.
Well, you can. It's just not simple because someone has to do that setup, someone has to do the cleanup. And then these times, someone has to do the cleaning afterwards. And so we. and so we have to take into account how those gyms are used during the day for the students, and then how that setup works, and, and so it's, the space is certainly there, but I wouldn't call it simple.
Darren, what, what kind of ability do we, I'm just trying to think of, okay, what, outside of a school building, what about that community room at the Nevillean? I know there's been kind of like community things there, it's, it's a bigger room, it's here, you know, is there any ability to utilize that?
It, it really comes back to what Aaron was saying, short of purchasing an entirely new sound system where, where each person is mic'd up individually and having someone who can, truly what you need is someone who can mix all that and put it into a computer and deal with the streaming part, and I hope to actually have that space that you're referring to, actually, the R room, it's in our plan, if we, we can find the funds to do that, but it, it, with the technology that we have in our boardroom, it, I mean, we hear it every time, we have two people in the same room try to, to speak on WebEx, there are major issues there, and anywhere we would go, anywhere we would go that's a large space and trying to do that, even if we had those microphones, you're still going to deal with the issues when you have the online and the, and the in-person, it's why it was so difficult for Aaron to share it here tonight, because we had one WebEx going, so we didn't get the feedback, but what we're relying on is trying to get that one computer to hear through the speaker system when people were speaking into their microphone, if we were speaking into the microphone, because as soon as we went up other computers, you get that feedback. So like, like Aaron said, anything is possible, but it's not possible without a significant investment in the technology and some climate setup and thinking about how we really want it to be, and so, and we do, I just want to make it clear, we do have plans for an, an up-to-date boardroom when we have an up-to-date district office, and, and that is hopefully going to be sooner rather than later, but it won't be for the next meeting on Monday.
What, I mean, I know tradition has had, I'm, I'm kind of throwing the spaghetti on the wall here when it comes to this, but what is our tradition been about holding meetings on Mondays? I know that alternate Monday for you, Katie, is that you run into your board meetings at your district, isn't it, or is that not so much?
I have a board meeting on the second Monday, but I'm not afraid to ask, they, they moved from the third Monday to the second Monday for me, so they may be happy to go back to the third Monday for me.
We don't want to abuse our privilege, but you know, is there something that says we can't hold our board meetings on the first and third Tuesday of the month? I mean, I don't know, is that, is there some significant limit, I mean, I'm kind of throwing this out to administration too, because I'm, you know, bucking a tradition here on, on a Monday, but.
Lori, I'm trying to jump into board policy, just to make sure what our board policy says about meetings, I'm just, I'm not fluent in this role yet.
How?
A whole couple of weeks.
I'm pretty sure that we would have support policy that might speak to when our meetings are held, Jesse, if you get there faster than me, please.
I was doing the exact same thing, Jen.
I, I love it when great minds, honestly, as a parent and too, having, having things planned on a day before, you know, traditionally Wednesday, Wednesdays where late starts, you know, it was always easy to justify, you know, my kid's waiting up for me to be home from a late meeting.
But I say about policies, we can always change the policy, so.
That's right. Right.
So.
It's in 20410 as first and third.
Yay.
Um, but yes, it says, the first sentence of 20410 is the regular meeting time and date will be set by the board at its annual or organizational meeting.
Which would be November now.
Right. It does also say in this policy, all meetings will be held in the boardroom of the administrative office unless otherwise approved, approved by the board, so if we start getting real creative about how we're going to have our board meet to involve the public more fully, we just, we want to make sure we're keeping 20410 in mind and amending it if we need to.
I mean, are, are board members open to looking even at that point of, you know, holding the meetings on, I mean, I'm not saying, hey, I'm holding them on a Friday night, because, you know, maybe we have plans on weekends, I don't know, but, you know, like on a Tuesday, you know, the first and third Tuesday instead of a Monday, that way, you know, you have people who can get to the city council and to board meetings.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I couldn't hear you, Jim, what was that?
Be cutting out. I can't hear half of everyone.
I'm hearing everyone fine, how's everybody else doing?
Jim keeps freezing.
Yeah, Jim's frozen.
It's his computer, I, yeah.
Mine's, mine's mostly okay.
Lori, to your question, hopefully it can help Jim soon, but Lori, to your question, I think that's an excellent.
Hi, Graham. I, I would be open to a Tuesday or a Thursday, I mean, I've been teaching middle school church on Wednesdays, but I had to get out of that, I wouldn't feel that bad about it, but I would be open to that, I would be available.
What about time? I mean, does it, I know, I go to work at the crack of dawn, so I'm home early, I know not everybody has that kind of flexibility at the tail end of their schedule, I know five o'clock was kind of traditional because we're asking, you know, staff to stay here, but at the same time, if our board members can't make the meetings, it's kind of pointless. What do people feel about times? I know for the community, being on a, a online meeting, five is sometimes hard because, you know, kids want supper, but, um, what do you guys, what are, I need, I need opinions.
Well, the, the tradition used to be the work session was at five, and that was a little low-key and was regularly not attended by public, it was open, but it was just more subject matter, and we're not talking big subject matter like Corona necessarily, but, and then the business meeting didn't start till six because that gave most everybody else a chance to attend if they wanted to, you know, that was, that was the, the standing tradition, somewhere a few years ago, sessions kind of went by the wayside and they moved the, the business meeting time up to five, and I've always personally struggled with that for that reason, you know, if we moved the work session, we shift everything 15, 20, 15 minutes or a half hour, I don't know if that gives the seven of us a, a better chance of attending the work session, again, it's whatever you do on the top end, you got to add it to the backend in terms of length, so we want to figure that out, plus, again, Lori, as you suggested, the, the staff consideration there as well, so.
Anybody have any other opinions about, about time or day, or, I mean, obviously we're not going to make a decision tonight, but as much feedback as possible so we can make a decision as soon as possible would be great.
I guess, we just, what is our, who was our priority? What, as a board, who, who are we here to serve? And how do we make sure that's being met? So we can answer that question, I guess that would help us.
Right.
So when it comes to, like, specific, I'll ask it specific to the board, work sessions at five, regular meeting at six, work sessions at 5:30, regular meeting at 6:30, I mean, I just, I specifically want to make sure that everybody can get, can get here and, and not struggle, and not struggle with that, because I know, for me, I'm, I'm not going to voice too big an opinion because I don't have that issue, what do you guys think about that, who has, you know, popping it forward half an hour? Do you think that gives the public more access? Does it give our board the access they need?
I could do five or 5:30, I think, 5:30 and six, either one helps the public. I would love to have regular work sessions, but I don't, I think work sessions are a fluid situation, an hour is not always going to be long enough, and an hour might be 55 minutes too long, depending on what's going on, but having more work sessions or a new board member who's been thrown into coronavirus and hiring a new administrator would be fantastic.
And, and we can have the flexibility too of adding work sessions on off weeks, you know, if, if you guys are open to that, the addition to your schedules, I mean, and.
Yeah, and keep in mind, the work session stuff typically is not coronavirus type stuff, so typically they're manageable within that timeframe, and, and again, back in the day, they used to shoot for 50 minutes because there was a 10-minute break between the work session and the start of the business meeting, so I think in a normal situation, that would be a great setup to go back to that and to get it, whether it starts at five or starts at 5:30, whatever, there, but that kind of format seemed to work well in a normal situation.
And I also think that the kind of board that we have come together to be and the kinds of big, long-range thinking that, that we all have and the things we want to accomplish, more work sessions are only going to help us achieve all of those, those goals that we have.
I totally agree with that, Amy.
Could I offer a possibility here maybe to help?
Oh, please, throw in.
It's kind of an immediate need, and then there's what, and I, what you want regularly, and so because the current policy, well, yes, we can change it, but currently it says that the regular meeting time and date is set by the board at its annual organizational meeting, which is in November, it then goes on to say the board shall meet the first and third Monday of each month, so if we would continue that regular first and third Monday through October, building in maybe a work session each month, I can see us needing them related to return to learn, but also maybe there's some other areas we could tiptoe in, once we have a longer-term interim in place, we could work with that person to, to map those out maybe for six months or so, but then you guys can come back in November now with a clearer idea of, okay, do we want to stay on the first and third Monday? Or maybe you make that decision before November, knowing you want to change the policy moving into November, to move to a different night so you can get that into policy, and also, I would, I would recommend, this is just my opinion, if we go with the consistency of what is known right now and stay with, to the degree possible, virtual meetings where everyone can be heard, and we can work on some of the technology for our work sessions, we really were piecing that together when Samantha got back, we don't want to make a huge investment, knowing we're headed to a remodel that will allow for that, but if we could get just maybe a few items that would strengthen that, we could stay in the virtual mode at least through August, and provide our community that open door to, to sit at home safely, I know you guys, you know, we did it well tonight in the work session, keeping you all socially distanced and that sort of thing, but I do think for the public to hear, it's probably better in this environment, so I guess, short, let me be shorter, in the short term, we stayed virtual on the Monday, first and third Monday at five o'clock, then in the next month, maybe Lori can, you can send Lori individually what you prefer, we could move to make policy align with where you all land with that, so that in November, you can come back, make a decision that better suits you and the community and move forward.
Do you think in the short term, we could just maybe do a time shift? Since we're not changing, I mean, it, it'll help accommodate some of that a little bit better, where even if we do the work set, you know, if we shift everything, you know, work session, five to six, board meet, regular board meeting time starts at six, if we don't have a work session, the board meeting starts at six, if we do have a work session, the work session starts at five, I mean, because like you said, we may not always have to have a work session, and that shouldn't have to involve any policy change, correct?
I don't think anything in policy, Jesse, do you, that would say, speak to time?
Nope, I think that's fine.
And, and this is Melissa, just, was there ever a calendar approved with the time on it?
The days, for sure.
Yeah, the days, I don't know if I ever saw, I couldn't speak to time, Jim's computer crashed, so he's hanging out with me.
Okay. If, if that schedule does not contain times, then you can go ahead and do what you're thinking of doing, if it does contain times, then we're going to need to approve a new schedule, adjust for the time.
I'm looking at the page that, on the website, and I'm not sure if this is just narrative we added, or if this was part of what was officially approved, but the school board meeting schedule page says that the board will meet twice per month at 5:00 PM, and then the calendar just lists dates and doesn't say 5:00 PM in the calendar itself, so I think we would probably need to go back and figure out what was officially approved. And secretly, Jody was standing at my door, holding up what was officially approved, and there are no times on it, so I think we can change the time.
Yay, Jody.
And I would also change the website then too.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're muted, Lori.
So many things to click, the website should be relatively easy, I'm, I'm not the computer person, is that Samantha?
Very easy.
I like easy.
I'm in support of that, adjusting the times.
Because basically we would just keep it like what we had tonight.
Correct.
So, does that need a board action? Because it's not a policy change, it's just a.
I just want to make sure that we are as clear as we can on our communications about if, then, then this, if, then, then that, you know, kind of, just so people know they're not shut up at five and where is everybody, so, yeah, I mean, when we're consistent every week or every time with a work session, no big deal, but if we're going to kind of adjust these, we just make sure we're clear.
We post that stuff on Fridays.
Yeah, we do, I just, you know, just making sure people understand start times, Mike, because that's, that, that would be new.
Well, and I think Katie too, to your point of, you know, the irony of having online meetings while we're discussing having kids in school, you know, not being lost, also balancing the need of being able to connect with as many people as possible during this time as well, does that, do those two think, you know, can we circle that square? Where we're, you know, telling people the best way to get the most people access to the direct information is for us to hold the meeting this way, not because we don't necessarily think that we can all handle being in a room together wearing masks, but in the interest of public access, that this gives as many people an opportunity to see what it is that we're doing, especially right now.
I mean, we have 137 panelists right now, there was upwards of 180, you're not, you're not getting that many people in the boardroom.
We'd have a hard time social distancing that many people in an auditorium, honestly.
Correct.
And, and then you run down the rabbit hole of mask compliance and all of those things that, you know, I mean, the irony is not lost on any of us, I think the public can be pretty assured of that, but I don't know, balancing their need and desire for that information, I think, right now, especially what Jen said, Jen said, the consistency of them depending on being able to hear this, I think is pretty darn important.
Hey, I just want to echo what we're talking about, I want to make sure that as many of our public can listen into our meetings, and so whatever way we can do that best, and then tell them what Lori was just saying, that the best way to do that is, you know, having it a WebEx, because I just want to make sure they can.
For now, yeah.
For now, but I'd like us to long-term, whenever our new normal occurs, make sure that our public can still be, access us in some fashion, other than being in the room that they don't want to be.
No, you're fine.
Right. Does anybody have, I mean, I know we've discussed kind of a lot of things right now, does anybody have anything that we haven't kind of talked about or haven't, haven't addressed, or something that you want to make sure? kind of talked about or haven't haven't addressed or something that you want to make sure we get? Samantha, I know there were some options right now concerning the online stuff that weren't an option previously because like now we have this contract with WebEx. Is there any information in that that gives us some more opportunities?
Well, I think as Erin alluded to before, um, we, you know, we made today work. I think that there are ways that we um, could purchase um, materials to make it work better. Um, i- if in the future we were to go to in person, in person meetings where you're all in the boardroom and that are then streamed out. Um, with some very small purchases, um, WebEx has a list of um, types of cameras they support that would connect easily with this. Um, and and I think just to speak to another thing, um, I I've been listening to everyone. I I just happen to be referencing two things Erin said here. Um, but to speak to another thing that Erin said, if we were to make a change, I think that we would want to do some more broad communication about board meeting times and how to access than we typically do, just because in the past, it's been fairly consistent for our community. Um, but if we make a change, we'd want to do a bigger push on that than we would do.
Right.
For just for a while to get them used to it. So.
So like Jen said, you know, even building it into the anticipation of a policy change in November. You know, it's going to come way quicker than we think. But you know, like you said, it takes time to to move that that sort of stuff too. So.
But yeah.
I would just add in sort of in support of what Samantha's saying. Um, I know we will talk more about this in the coming weeks, but as we start to think about the process for engaging the community around our search for a permanent superintendent, I think making sure that we have, I mean, who knows what the school year will look like, whether or when it will be possible for us to gather in large groups together. And we know that the community voice in that process will be incredibly important, just as it is now. So thinking about the kind of infrastructure that we might need to make that uh, to make it possible for us to continue meeting virtually now. Um, I think will pay off long term as we think about that important decision as well.
Hey, um, this might be something for Darren. Um, what are the options of, I know we had just kind of thrown out there, um, gym space. What are the options of like auditorium space, like utilizing the AV equipment that's already built into the auditoriums for performances? You know, with the mics and and all that kind of stuff.
I think I see Darren in the hallway, which me on the sun, which means some sort of emergency.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
He's helping Jim.
Oh, he's helping Jim. Well, that is an emergency situation. Everybody, he's pacing back and forth in front of my office on the phone.
And I've and I very rudely put him on the spot without seeing him on the camera.
Um, I think we can have him investigate that. I think.
Yeah.
I mean.
Without having, you know, to buy new equipment, we've got, you know, auditoriums full of.
Yes, it's not quite the same setup there.
Well, yeah.
We just need a system that has a camera and the ability for the boardroom audio to feed in. And as long as everybody's on the mic, you know, it's one system in one system, you know. Uh, again, there's some, I think Samantha's correct, there's some ways to do this. I just have to figure out the most um,
Yep.
reasonable way to do it.
Are are we wretched people for asking you for one more thing during this time? To look into one more thing?
No, we can certainly look into it, Lori. I think the thing to keep in mind is if we start using spaces that are generally scheduled for student use, it may limit our our meeting flexibility.
Right, right. You know, those those are just all the things that that we don't know. So, you know, tell us, you you've, I'm sure you've gotten an idea of what we're aiming for. You know, you guys are the experts in in this utilization and stuff, you know, let us know what's possible. You know, what what can we do? What can't we do? What's I guess appropriate? And and manageable, like you said, without making huge expenses into accommodating things that are already on the plan, you know, for the future. But if you guys could, you know, just let us know what our limits are and what our opportunities are, I think, for meetings in the future. That would be fantastic. Anybody else have a in addition or? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Now, to the return to learn district plan. Dr. Lindeman, I'll I'll tee you up on that.
So, well, while I know you guys said you had some additional questions you um, have want to ask. And any of our team can jump in and respond to any of those, but I will say, I think the question from the public that came earlier tonight was a staff question specifically, I believe. If I understood the question correctly, and I would just say um, that staff member bringing that question through the staff avenues of communication would be awesome. Um, I know that our association and our HR team are working together closely on how we support staff members. Work, we do know, I would want you to know, um, that Senate file I was mentioning earlier, 2310 does require that school staff are available during regular required contract hours. That's not something we can adjust. And I mean, from a personal perspective, that's kind of a bummer because I know my former life as a high school person, a lot of those high school kids could do some synchronous learning at night. Um, when there are teachers that would support that. But 2310 is really clear about um, leaving it their regular required contract hours. And we have a negotiated contract, so that makes sense that we would do that. Um, and um, it speaks specifically to that in a remote learning environment. And the other thing I would just offer, just as a piece of information that that goes is important to consider in that is going into a remote learning environment could be for just a classroom of students or for just a building if there's a particular outbreak or such, and we we wouldn't then put the whole district into that remote learning environment. And so we it it will be a very targeted approach to the degree we can in consultation with the Department of Public Health and Polk County Health and so forth. So that's why we just in general asked staff earlier this summer to consider the fact that in a remote learning environment, we could be all onsite during that. Now, if the governor shuts everybody down, that's different. You know, um, there's then been a statewide outbreak and we want everybody sheltering in place, that sort of thing. That's very different. But the the code is very clear. Staff need to be um, working their contract hours in a remote learning environment, and we just want to be able to target um, building by building, classroom by classroom as we need to. And so um, that's why we've had the conversation with staff. More details will come in our partnership with the association and HR. Jesse, anything you would add? What other questions?
Uh, Dr. Lindeman, before we get going too far, you did a really great summation of just like a quick timeline of what our opportunities are, what is going to come out within the next week, you know, two weeks. You know, the special board meeting, all that kind of stuff. For the public who couldn't see or know about the um, work session that we had, could you maybe just do a quick little summation of these are the choices, you know, like the choice of remote learning and when the surveys are are going to come out, just kind of that little capsule?
Sure. So the governor's proclamation on Friday um, gave a specific guidance as to when we can have a remote learning environment. Essentially limiting it to four ways to have a remote learning environment. One would be through student or family choice. Two of them would be in conjunction with the Department of um, Health, either from a state level or from a local level. And then the fourth is for snow days. So we will be offering our families a remote learning environment. Um, and we will be getting that communication out to them this week. Our our goal is tomorrow or Wednesday, where they will be able to indicate or apply. Um, let us know that that's what they want for their child. Starting that this week, and we are thinking was if we could come back to the board for a decision on Monday, the 27th as to how we will enter the school year as a system, that would help our families make decisions about whether they want to select that remote learning environment and what um, what the timeline is. So we were thinking that we would give families through like the end of this month through July 31st to consider whether or not a remote learning environment was what they wanted to do. They would be committing to that for a semester. Um, again, our recommendation to you was that you would um, consider and potentially approve on July 27th, our entry into the school year in a hybrid model to ensure that um, our teachers and our students, one, enter safe environments. Two, are at a ratio that we can teach and train our students to the degree possible. All of the new routines they're going to need to learn. Um, start building those relationships. And I I gave you that full rationale, but um, essentially that allows our staff to get started immediately in their planning because they're going to need to load um, content um, into their asynchronous um, environments so that students can access those from day one. Um, again, my recommendation was that when we commit starting that way, we do that for a six week period of time. At the four week mark, we make a decision and communicate it to our families as to what the next six weeks will entail to give them time to adjust their family schedules, their work schedules, their childcare, all of those types of things. So um, I was that the timeline you were looking for me to explain again, Lori, or did I miss?
Right, right. Basically, I'm because a lot of our, you know, the vast majority of the questions that that we've been getting and that you guys have been getting is, will Ankeny offer a voluntary online option? The answer is yes. Um, however many of those um, need to happen will happen. Whatever percentage of the student body is, for lack of a better term, left after the voluntary options are kind of taken out of the mix, those students will be involved in a hybrid, if if that is your recommendation as of July 27th, would be involved in a hybrid plan of, you know, half on, half off kind of thing. Um, now, that I think that is just to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly. Um, I guess the one thing that I, in between our work session in here, that I wondered was um, with this voluntary plan, um, those, like you said, those families would commit to that voluntary plan for a semester, because that's how we have to manage our staff. Will families be able to choose voluntary per child, or is it per family unit? Like, they may have a high schooler who voluntary works great. They may have an elementary student or a special needs student, but that would not work great.
That's a great question, Lori. And yes, I'm looking at Jesse. She's going to lead on putting this together, the timeline and process. But yes, it would be by student, not by family, but by student.
Okay.
Yep, completely agree.
I just wanted like those like very specific words out there for our families to hear. That. Um, I guess. Go forward. I just, I just wanted to kind of start this discussion with kind of like that baseline of families will have that voluntary option. And if they have already registered their children for school, will they'll be in, will there'll be a new process for them that comes out?
They're still a part of our school. So registration, like any other school registration moves forward, just like anything else. This will be a special form sent to them via our email system and posted on our website where they will go in and complete that form and it'll get submitted to us. And then we'll work from there to put students into classes and assign teachers and all of that.
Sure.
And that form will go out to um, the parents guardians of every child and in the district who's currently, you know, has registered enrolled in the district. So even if they've already said, here's the school where they're going next year. Even if they've said, we're going to try to open enroll another district because of health concerns, they will receive this opportunity to say, I want my child to be in Ankeny schools, and I would like for them to be doing all online learning for the first semester. Um, everyone will get that survey.
Okay.
And I just want to confirm that there's no required underlying medical condition in the household. It's open to anyone.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those felt like super clear things that we wanted to make sure people knew before we before we kind of got into the minutia of some of the board members' questions about, you know, our very specific things, because I know that was something that people were very interested in hearing right now. And the details will come, but the theme is these are, this is our working template, correct? Okay. So we'll, I guess we'll start with questions. Um, Erin, I saw you pop up.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, Dr. Lindeman, I mean, thank you for the work session. I know that there's a tremendous amount of work that you and many, many others have put into this and um, kind of for staying the course, knowing that there's been a lot of confusion about exactly what a return to learn plan is and what it is that people thought we were choosing or not choosing. And um, you know, there's what we want to do, and there's what we have to do and and kind of the in between. Um, you know, there's still a lot of question or people wanting to know, okay, why not um, why not, why not have 100% um, option? Um, I'm going to go ahead and maybe say, there's an online option. We have to do it for certain health reasons. So the number of people there um, voluntary or 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 necessary, however you want to. Okay, we've got that going. So I'm not trying to express necessarily equal or but a both and. Um, we have families that have to choose the online version for health reasons. Is there going to be an opposite that families that have to choose a full time option? Um, you know, and is that even in the mix or in the consideration and and how that would go? Um, are we looking, so so basically I want to ask a handful of questions. I don't know if we really get them all answered right now tonight. But as we have these forums and have more discussion, um, I I do think we need to address and look at um, uh, you know, because I've already seen the emails of, no, I don't like the hybrid, just send them all back to school, right? Because we've got both spectrums uh, in our community that are interested in returning to school one way or the other. Do we have to look at it as a whole system? Could we separate it and have elementaries be um, more or 100% versus the high school that could be um, a little bit more um, hybrid oriented? Um, and then at the the four week mark, um, you were talking about, okay, we're going to do this for six weeks at the four week mark. What what? And maybe some of these questions will get answered as the state gives us better clarification. I think there's a handful of those things I'm still really curious about um, in terms of what happens when, dot, dot, dot type of thing. Um, I mean, is, are we really looking to them to be our yes or no? Um, in in that four week mark, if everybody says, okay, everybody's time to find to go back, we leave the online system going for the full semester because that's what we've agreed to. And then everyone could return theoretically, just as much as everyone could go um, in a lockdown theoretically. Is is that kind of the swing we're looking at potentially over the next semester? I don't know. That's a lot to throw at you. I'm just trying to piece together everything I heard in the work session, knowing that a lot of these questions around why are we just going back to school um, full time for those that want to um, an option?
I'm going to work backwards, Aaron, and give you my my best answers. Um, I would say to you that our recommendation to go in on a hybrid is based on what we know now from the CDC and Polk County Health. Um, certainly, we will be monitoring that and we are, I am hopeful that the state saying to us, we are going to put together metrics um, to guide your decision making and share it with us the first week week of August. I'm, I guess I want to hold him to that. Um, I I know that um, when I look at where we're, well, I won't get. I I know that when I look at where we're, well, I won't get into the numbers right now, but I guess what I'm saying to you is as we monitor that using their tool or our own guides in making decisions, when we're gonna function as a system in making those decisions, like when we're purposeful in saying, okay, here's what we know now, I think we owe it to our families to have at least two weeks of time if we're gonna come back all onsite to arrange their schedules to do that. I think doing that overnight is really challenging. The only way it's gonna happen overnight to completely shut down is one of two things. Either the state says we need to go, everyone to go to a remote learning environment, or we have had something happen on one of our sites in one of our classrooms, and we have to notify a targeted group of people about that. But I but I can't imagine making a decision overnight that, oh, we're gonna go back full.
I just meant at the four-week mark that at at the six-week mark, we would do that. That's all. I was just wondering what's gonna happen at that four-week mark, so.
It's communication. And then certainly our internal folks need to start to get ready for what that looks like. I don't see, I understand your question about giving people the choice to all go onsite to manage that. That would mean that we would need to offer our staff choice in all of this. Our staff, other than resignation, which I, for one, do not want to happen. I I'm concerned that it may happen for some of our folks. But our staff doesn't have a choice but to come back and engage in the work. And so if we can make that in a way that keeps them as safe as possible, allowing for those underlying conditions for folks to go through the process of remote working. But everybody else, how can we make our environment as safe as possible for them? And I, the hybrid model does that better. So I, that's my answer to your your question about whole system or offering a choice to be in sight. Erin, Jesse, anything else you would add to what you heard from Erin?
I would just build on what you what you just said, Jen, thinking about our staff, which is the thing that keeps me up at night. The best opportunity that we have under the current state guidance to be in compliance with the CDC guidelines or get as close to them as we can is to limit the number of people that are in the building, right? Because then it's easier just to spread people out. And bringing everyone back who has chosen to come back instead of going to all online learning really, really, really jeopardizes our ability to get as close as we can to all of that CDC guidance. And I think we owe it to everyone in our community to do what we can to to meet that guidance.
Maybe one last thing in terms of for me, at least personally, when we make this decision, and and I'm hoping the state will help fill in some of these gaps. Before I want to vote to go into something, I want to know what it is that's gonna help us get out of it, right? And I just don't want to vote on something that's just in perpetuity. I want to understand, we we we're going into it because X, Y, and Z, and then the steps that have to happen in order for us to go back to, you know, whatever we want to call normal. Just trying to look at this, you know, as systematically and logically as we possibly can. So again, I think there's gonna be some more questions and 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 interest between the 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 state or the Polk County Health Department comes out with their their guidance. So I'll save the rest of that for that time, so.
I just think we need to be prepared. We haven't gotten any guidance from the state that's been super helpful yet. So I'm not holding my breath that that's gonna be the case at the beginning of August. And if that's the case, I would anticipate Polk County superintendents will work together with Polk County Public Health to put together those metrics. I mean, there were superintendents around the state doing that and then stopped doing that because the governor said that they would provide that for us. And I think we have to recognize it's very clear by state leadership that the priority is custodial. And it is not health and safety. And so I have a little hesitation that then what we could be given by the state of Iowa is gonna prioritize that.
Well, that we're gonna have to really figure out what those metrics are, and that's gonna spend a lot more time doing that on our own. And to figure out how to pull the politics and the emotion out of the equation and try to do this with, you know, our priorities in mind. And so that's gonna obviously be very, very difficult. I I do, yeah, well, we'll just, yeah, that's the frustration point.
Katie, I love that opportunity of, you know, working with the other school districts within Polk County because like this is a very, you know, at the very base level, it seems like county data is the lowest level we get. You know, and and that's where we live. I I unfortunately hold your pessimism about getting functional metrics. Like Erin said, not only to tell us when to go home, but when to tell us to come back. Because, you know, the easy decision is, oh, everybody does what they're supposed to do. You know, the virus stops, you know, growing so much, it goes down to a level that everyone's like, eh, no big deal, go back to school. That is, of course, what we all want. That happens outside of the walls of our schools, unfortunately.
One last, one last component that I know is on a lot of people's minds right now, and that's the extracurricular side of things. I mean, what what can you speak to in terms of what we're even going to be able to do or allow? And then how do we make sure that both theater systems are kind of making those decisions together? We don't start getting some, you know, well, they do this, they do that kind of thing, so.
I can speak to that if that's all right. The the associations and unions that govern our activities have been putting out information. And and I will say, I appreciate that they are trying to put out up-to-date and current information. We talked in the work session a little bit about the music studies that have been that have been done and trying to help those teachers and those directors figure out what can and can't be done and how it's doing to keep everybody safe. And so the Ohio High School Music Association has been, has provided that they they have taken the step of canceling state marching band. They're they're, I'm sure all seen the news. Over the weekend, the Ohio High School Athletic Association is voting full steam ahead with with all sports. I think that what I can tell you locally is this, Scott Jarvis and Andy Unkin, Mike and Holly at the eight, nine level have have been partnering, have been working like crazy to try to come up with plans that are going to be workable for their coaches and safe for their kids. And and there's a tremendous amount of collaboration amongst all four of them in in devising the plans. They've been meeting with their coaches. They have been stressing mitigation. Mitigation is the key for all of this for everybody. The more we can mitigate the virus spread, the sooner the virus spread stops, the sooner we get back to normal. So they have been stressing mitigation with their teams. They unfortunately have had plenty of experience with with scares, with false positives, positives, with family positives and all that through since we started on June 1st. And so they, in some ways, are paving the way for our experiences. We bring more more students back. But but I guess what I can tell you is right now, we're only working as best we can with the guidance for those organizations and the Department of Education. And I'm in contact with those guys often, and and they're asking the right questions. They're they're trying to do the right thing. I think that's true through the team staff and through our our players as well.
And and I I've heard bits and pieces of that, and and I I think they're working really hard at that. I know in one extracurricular that, you know, that just both North and South just made some announcements. And in their announcements, they were kind of different. And so we're already have people asking, well, how come this? How come that? And so there's, again, those things haven't even started yet, and there's already some confusion around, you know, what's, who's making the decisions, what's being allowed, you know, is it in the system? Is it outside the system? So we're gonna have to have a careful, careful eye on that more than we normally do because this is, this is different. And I want to make sure that if we're offering it in the North, we're offering it in the South or vice versa. That's just gonna add more to the consternation of what we're dealing with.
For sure. And I think that the 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 trick there is is it's gonna be difficult for all of us to get used to because it's so different. Having to go to an outside organization and have them talk you through how to investigate potential positive case and and how close that is to the activity. Because and and I'm just telling you, we we have to call them, they talk us, they ask the protocol of questions, and then they advise. And so it's, I'm glad that we have that because I'm certainly not a medical doctor. I I'm not an epidemiologist, but it is a, it is a degree of external guidance that that is very different for for us when it comes to our activities.
Yeah. Well, and this one, this is more of what, you know, what particular extracurricular, you know, one is gonna do this, one is gonna do that. You know, I'm thinking more again into the equity in terms of offerings. You know, what happens in those cases due to a positive case, you know, that you just have to deal with it in a specialized way. But in terms of baseline offerings, we need to be pretty consistent there.
Sure.
Anybody have any additional questions?
Sure. Can you?
Yes.
And this is kind of connected to what Erin was just talking about. And maybe if someone can just go through what the protocol will be if a staff or a student tests positive for COVID-19. So I know Darren has talked about consulting with Polk County Health or whatever. Can someone just give an example of what our people will do if that happens so that our general public has a handle on?
Absolutely. Let me start with sort of what we're doing now and some structures that we are in the process of getting in place once we have more of our staff back and then Darren can layer on and talk about what happens once Darren and I have that information. Because for the course of the summer, we have been the kind of go-to people when we have had people that were ill or suspected of being ill or who had been around someone who was ill this summer. So the process that we will have in place during the school year, and we kicked this off with our administrative team, our building principals this morning, is every campus will have what we're calling a health response team, which will be made up of a member of that building's administrative team, counselor or social worker, and the school nurse from that particular building. And those teams will be trained, will be in regular contact with Darren and myself and other people as it makes sense to make sure that they are armed with the most up-to-date information about how to respond if someone lets them know that they are ill. We will set up technology. So if a staff member isn't feeling well and they are exhibiting symptoms, they're at home, they can contact probably text or call if they're out of the building. A member of their designated health response team to say, hey, I'm putting in for leave. Here's what's going on. Those team members will then get that information to Darren and to me. Darren, to handle sort of the operation side of that. I will handle making sure that they have access to the information that they need about leave that's available and all the sort of human resources sides of things. We also think that those teams will be really critical if someone is not feeling well when they are in one of our buildings, instead of then having to go to the nurse, get in the nurse's office and say, hey, I need to go home. I'm really not feeling great. I have these symptoms. They'll just be able to communicate email, text, phone in some sort of way. And we'll set up a protocol to make sure that that their messages are received, but with their sort of building designated staff and say, here's what's going on. I need to be isolated and communicate in that way. And again, those teams who are really well-trained in what the expectations are when those situations arise, will then get that information to me. They'll get that information to Darren, and we will take care of it sort of at the systemic level. And I will let you, Darren, weigh in and talk a little bit about what happens once you and I have that information.
Yeah, there there isn't a whole lot to to add other than coordinating communication with the the folks, both those that are reporting and then helping make a plan for how we how we work around that or whatever that job is, how we're going to cover, how we're going to clean. That type of thing. So I think Jessie explained that pretty well.
Can I ask probably both of you, how do health privacy laws fit into all of this, either from a student or staff perspective? Because we're, especially for staff, we're bound by, you know, HIPAA to not discuss people's personal private health information. We're also bound by, you know, our students' privacy. How do we, you know, kind of do that self-reporting? How do we, I guess, keep the information that our students and their families want private, private, but at the same time recognize, you know, you know, the contact tracing and all the things that have to happen when we do have a case? And honestly, incentivizing and encouraging people to self-report because none of this matters if people have a positive result and they don't tell anyone. Then it's just out there because we know how people think, and it's not them being careless or, you know, uncaring. It's just, I don't want to be the person who shuts my school down. I don't want to be the person who shuts my football team down. You know, that's kind of human nature. But at the same time, we need to, you know, there there's a public health component to this information that is really pretty vital to the health and safety of our students. So how how do we work that together?
Yeah, I think I think that's really important. Obviously, we we have to apply by HIPAA and and FERPA. And and I think we as a society have to work on the communication that the sooner you know and report and isolate and the better we do mitigation at that point, the better the chance that we're not shutting down the classroom, shutting down the school, shutting down the team, shutting down everything else. And so again, I go back to the partnership with Polk County Health Department is is where that contact tracing comes in. That's not, that that's not us making those calls. It is it is Polk County that will then follow up with with families and and guide them on what their next steps need to be based on whatever the situation is that that they're investigating.
And just in terms of protecting the privacy of our staff, I will say this summer, we have set up a system that has staff who to take leave. The FF-CRA leave that I know we've talked about in the past is sort of on-top paid leave that's available to folks for COVID-related reasons. All of that has been coming directly to me and only to me. And then I have one member of my team who, just from an administrative perspective, takes those documents, prints them off, stores them separately from personnel files, so they are not commingled with anything that other people have access to, similar to how we're treating FMLA requests and ADA requests. And then she directly goes and does the the specific like coding and notations in our payroll system to try to keep things as confidential as possible. I think like we will need to make sure, well, one other thing I'll say about what our current practice has been up until this point is if we have had a need to notify employees within within our our district that they have been in contact with someone who may have tested positive or who's exhibiting symptoms. We've used some some model language that's been made available from the state and from various law firms that we work with to make sure that we are as as confidential and anonymous in sharing that information as possible. I have been doing the follow-up calls directly, again, just to keep it as contained to like a few people with people that are out um, determining from them with whom they have been in close contact and then doing the outreach to those folks. Myself, my worry because we need to act urgently, and I think one thing we'll need to figure out with these health response teams on the campuses, is that in a typical week, I probably have 50 staff members that I speak to with concerns or people that need to be contact traced or that need to you know, go home and, and that's, it's summer. Most of our staff is not at work. And so we're going to need to have a structure in place that allows for the scaling of that kind of rapid response in a confidential way. Cause the, the Jesse and Darren show sort of worked for the summer, but um, we're talking about a fraction of our staff.
That can be your full-time job.
It has been, Jim.
I know. I don't even imagine.
Yep. I have a question. So us as a district needs to have that scaling, but what kind of staffing is Polk County Health Department? Like, do we know that there are a sta- there's a, a team of six that are serving these three schools and we will always have access to them? Or are we gonna be, we'll get to you wherever, after we deal with these three and it might be a couple of days before we can even get to you? Like what has County Health told you?
I've never had it be a couple of days. I've had it be
In the summer.
Longer than I want it to be. Yeah. So we have uh, what we have is a, a phone number and a direct phone number. And we call and leave a number and they'll call us back and we work through it that way. And that's guidance that they provided to all Polk County schools, it's the same.
They, they think they can staff once school starts, they can, they have enough staff.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
Darren.
We have a phone number and a direct phone number that we call.
Okay, Darren.
Yes.
Share, how long is the return call time? I'm just curious.
It depend, I mean, we've called in and, and had somebody pick up the phone and talk to us right away. We've called in and it's taken an hour and a half to get it sorted out. I mean, it's um, I, I would say Polk County Health has been, has been responsive to our needs here in the summer. I mean, considering all the things that are going on, I don't hear me complaining about that.
I
If we have any, I don't know if they have any plans to staff.
Okay.
I would say in Story County, which is much smaller, there's a staff of three and when, and when Iowa State had its breakout this summer, they called in National Guard and handed it over to National Guard. So I think there's, if I just use that as a tiny example, there's probably some backup plans for they would do something like that.
Yeah, I have a friend who's in the guard and they're already have plans to be deployed again at, at school start time. Same reason.
I ask um, about the hybrid schedule, is there a plan, I, I, maybe we talked about this, is it dividing by households? And have we made that decision how that's going to happen yet or that we're anticipation there?
Yes, we're going to keep uh, households on the same, on the same group, same A-day or B-day group. And uh, and work with transportation to make sure that, that we can balance that out as best we can as we, as we divide up the student for A and B day and the hybrid.
So to piggyback on that, so one week you might be two days and then next week you might be three days. And that could be K-12.
Yeah, it'll just alternate.
Right.
Every other day.
Right.
Is there any thought to, you know, I know you've got the layer of households, um, but of adding the layer of um, geography? Where you might have a neighborhood, you know, when you think about busing and transportation, you know, instead of, you know, cherry picking every other house on the same block to go every other day, you would do it, you know, this, like this neighborhood, this street, this whatever, is that another layer to your A and B?
Yeah, the simplest way that I can explain it is that we're looking to do routes one, three, five and seven on, on A-days and two, four, six and eight on, on B-days so that the buses are running their routes, they're just not uh, picking up at every stop every day.
Okay.
But we will use all of our buses every day, right? So, so the next layer then is to divide those stops up so that we use all the buses and can spread the students out as much as possible through that.
So when you, not even talking about transportation, but then you got neighborhoods that live close where uh, so-and-so's mom takes these two or three families to school and then a different parent picks them all up. How, I mean, I know there's those kinds of little things that happen all over the city, so I don't know if that makes any sense either. Can people request assistance with that or?
I, I don't know that we've gotten to that level of detail and to be perfect. I don't know how we would. I think that's why it's so important that we give people the information they need as soon as possible so they can start making.
Absolutely. I get it.
This is, I've got a pretty um, specific question. I mean, and this goes back to um, last year with boundary changes and heritage opening and all that kind of stuff. I know that there was a big thing last year when we were just going through that boundary change process of having the opportunities for students, especially those who were switching schools, to have a chance to kind of preemptively get into their schools, to see things, to, you know, kind of get that comfort level. Is that something that just logistically can't happen right now because of the way things are? And they, and those building principals are finding other ways to kind of integrate those new students and, and especially heritage, you know, opening that new building?
Yeah, I'll start and then others can, can add to this with, with a whole lot of detail. I, I think that that's a critically important aspect of our work. And like so many things, the, the current situation has made that far more difficult than we thought it was going to be. But we still recognize how necessary that is. Now, we can't do it in a way that's going to sacrifice health before the first day of school. And so the principals are, are working to, to figure out, you know, how can they work with their teachers to, to make that work, you know? Leveraging both of digital, you know, video things as well as, as ways to still give people a sense of what does that classroom look and feel like before the very first day, especially for kindergarten. But also for students who are attending a new school, you know, all of our transition periods plus the boundaries, plus kindergarten coming in. That's been something that our principals have been thinking about a lot and, and will continue to work with their teachers to, to make a plan that works considering the circumstances we're in. And I'll let others go to the detail on that.
Yeah, back to school night is not going to be what it was.
I um, would share with you that we asked our principals to revisit all of those traditional uh, nights, assemblies, all of those things. And as you think about our district priorities that I shared with you Friday and um, your board report, your board report, the one that asks us to innovate and think creatively around our structured schedules and so forth. We asked them to consider either delaying them, if it isn't something that has to be done at a certain time, is it possible to look at doing that at a later time of year where we might be able to do it onsite? Or look at doing it virtually to the extent possible there, which we did quite a bit of this spring. We did a number of awards and ceremonies virtually. And um, just some of the ideas that were shared in that meeting, there were principals talking about like our transition grade levels. Let's say eighth grade. Maybe the eighth grade team does a video of their team rooms and who the teachers are on the team and sends that out to families. Maybe we do meet the teacher night on a schedule where the teacher goes into WebEx or Zoom and meets with the family that way. So we, we are getting as creative and innovative in how we can meet with our families to start building those relationships um, before school even starts.
One of the things we had talked about earlier was schedules. I will say that um, one of the things that, you know, you had talked about, you know, the elementary schedules, day schedules, will, will there still be Wednesday late starts? Cause that's something that, that a lot of parents like build into their, their work schedules and their daycare and transportation schedules and stuff like that. It seems kind of, you know, trivial now, but when you're starting to think about, you know, how you manage that, you know, A-day, B-day, you know, thing, that's one of those things that, oh, well, Wednesdays have always been late starts. You know, is that, you know, do things like that also get re, redone and revisited? You know, cause those were what our, our teachers used for their PD and stuff.
So as we started drafting our hybrid model and looking at how we could modify what we had put together, looking at that A-day, B-day, Lori, um, we know that on one Wednesday, it'll be the As at school and the other Wednesday, it'll be the Bs. And so um, we will know for certain what it looks like by the end of this week. But one of the options we looked at is could we continue with that Wednesday being a later start than all the other days of the week? The times may, may not be exactly the same. We also looked at, would it be better to have a late start each or a a similar start each day that was a little bit delayed across the course of a week during a hybrid model? So since you're alternating this way, maybe we stay the same um, at start. So again, more detail will, will come your way by the end of the week, but um, I don't know. I guess it's the shortest answer for the late start, at least considering it for the hybrid, but we'll know more at the end of the week.
And so that's a lot of our, you know, PD time too, so. That's probably going to be integrated into everything.
I have a question that might be a little obscure, but Lori just mentioned daycares. Uh, if we have daycares that are going to have our kids on the off days and those daycares want to provide curriculum support, is there a contact at the school? Is there any way to bridge that gap? If, you know, I work at a daycare, so um, if they are willing and parents are interested, is there anyone they can talk to, to try and facilitate that?
Um, yes, I'm looking at, um, if you want some detail, we could uh, give Amy Ditmar a chance to jump in and talk. She, oh, she's there, Amy, share what you and Nikki have been doing.
Um, so yes, Amy, we have actually um, been working to do some research of all of the daycares in town and um, finding out which ones accept school-aged children during the day, um, which ones have Wi-Fi and uh, which ones would be willing to uh, allow kids obviously to bring their Chromebooks in and support learning within their center. So that is some data that we're collecting um, so that should we be in the hybrid or online model, we can, we can activate that and we can partner with daycares and make sure learning continues in that setting.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that. Um, before and after school, will that be offered every day? Um, will it be only on the A or B day that your child is there? I guess, you know, we're, we're talking a lot about the hybrid because that kind of has the most variables and the most unknown. You know, if everybody's in school every day, all day, you know, a lot of these questions don't exist. But um, you know, for, for parents who depend on the before and after school, will it just be, you know, will they just pay for the days that their kids are at the building, like the A or the B day or?
Yep. And again, that's something that's in the works as well, but yes, we will provide before and after school programming, um, whether it's traditional um, or hybrid. Um, and yes, on the hybrid days, it would only be the days that your child is attending. Obviously due to space and numbers, we're not going to bring more kids in if we're asking half of them to stay home. So um, and yes, it would be at a prorated rate. The contracts would, would reflect on the amount of time that you're there.
Awesome. I guess I'll put in my, my next leap is um, what's happening with, I mean, we've, we've really talked about, you know, K through 12 because that's kind of where we go, but what about our preschool um, programming? Cause we were going to be moving them over to Terrace. How does that?
Yeah.
Let's throw them in the mix.
You're right. We, we've, when we talk about all of this, we really say K-12, but we should be saying it's pre-K-12. Because our preschool funding, so it's, it's required for the preschoolers to attend in order for us to receive that funding. So our preschool comes to school four days a week. Um, so we would still apply the hybrid model there where instead of the, you know, the kids coming four days, they would come twice. We'd still do A-B on Monday, Tuesday, A-B on Thursday, Friday. Um, they've always had Wednesdays off. Um, so we would continue that model, but yes, a lot of the things that you're talking about would apply to preschool as well.
Okay.
I can jump in.
Sure.
Switch gears a little bit. Uh, we have this forum on Thursday, um, twenty-third, I think. And um, can someone maybe just give a brief description of who will be facilitating it? Uh, just that'll be run because I don't really have a good grasp of what that's gonna be like.
Yep, I can do that. Um, so I think I shared with you in the work session, we've received, I think, over 400 questions.
Yeah.
Samantha has been going through those and grouping them into themes. Our plan um, is to send out the return to learn plan on Wednesday to the community. So folks have a chance to read through it because many of the questions that have been sent in are answered in that document. So we will spend the first, uh, I would say half of the hour together going in and highlighting areas in that return to learn document that address the questions that Samantha has put into themes for us. And then we'll reserve the last half-ish. We haven't mapped it out exactly. Uh, that's our priority for tomorrow morning. Uh, but the, the net rest will be answering those other questions that maybe aren't in the return to learn document. Samantha, if you want to speak and share more about the specifics of what you've seen in those themes, that'd be great too.
Yeah, um, a- as you can imagine, I'm sure you're getting similar emails to the questions that were submitted. I, I think that the two big chunks uh, were questions surrounding the hybrid learning model and questions surrounding um, the use of PPE. And as we've been discussing at Cabinet, um, our, our goal for Thursday is really to speak to every question that was answered, probably not uh, individually. But to make sure that the spirit of those questions is answered either through the presentation or um, at the end. And then if we, if there are questions we are not able to get to in that format, just out of um, respect for um, everyone that uh, it's going to take to pull this together um, to their time, um, we're going to make sure and get those answers published online as well. So um, there, you know, there were a handful of questions that were so specific that I, I'm gonna share those with the building principals and ask them to follow up with their parent community on them, just because I'm not sure that on a community forum uh, representing all of our buildings, it's really the appropriate place to go through that, but um, for the most part, I think folks have the same questions.
Sure. So there'd be like a panel of people talking to all the, all rest of the people that are watching.
But yep, and it's the folks you're looking at today, so.
Okay, so like all, like Amy and Jen and Darren, okay. And board members just uh, chime in and listen, just like Joe Public. Okay. Just wanted to have a clear picture of what it's gonna be like so I understood it and can participate. Thank you.
Yeah, and you'll get to see what the public's experience during board meetings is like, cause it's the same.
Exactly.
So, so for clarity, this, this is not on Thursday, this is not a board meeting. And so for us, we don't participate, we are observers.
Which I think would be great to observe, it'd be good for us.
So for, for, just for clarity purposes on making sure that we all behave ourselves properly as board members in a non-public meeting and boards, you know, not a board meeting, so we don't start chiming in and making decisions and doing inappropriate things.
To, you won't be able to. I'll have you all muted, so.
You've been waiting for that, haven't you?
That'll be fun for you.
Yes.
She's been waiting to mute us, I can tell. You, you know, I say that nicely. What else do people need to know? Ryan?
You know, I, I, maybe this has been talked about, um, you know, in your meetings, uh, but I haven't heard it mentioned at all. And I think it's worth um, us to all kind of know and consider the fact that by way of promoting a hybrid model, we are by default creating inequities within the district on how, how students are um, receiving their learning. And so my question is, um, do we have um, data points predetermined, set up so that we can monitor the students that are that have chosen the hybrid model, the students that have chosen the online model? So that um, when we do look at these So that, um, when we do look at these data points, when we do look at the subgroups, when we do look at historicals. We can see where the deficiencies lay and, uh, and figure out how we can help support the students when we do come back to, um, normal. Or, you know, whatever that is, hopefully all in at the schools at some point. Um, so that we can support those students that, um, you know, if their parents chose the online, um, option, that doesn't necessarily mean that they learn best that way. And so to make sure that those students are, are supported when they do come back to school. And that they're in an environment where they actually do succeed. Um, so I'm just curious if we have, uh, have thought about that or if there's, um, ways that we have can track that already set up.
I can say, Ryan, we, through our data hub, we can track, uh, pretty much any indicator related to student uh, demographic information in our system related to, uh, for the most part, student learning. Our assessment data is a little challenging after the year we're coming off of where we didn't get the full battery of assessment data. Um, and I would just say, uh, two things to keep in mind. The, the choice in this for families is whether they want their child to go fully into a remote learning environment for the semester. That's an individual family's choice. Everyone else is going to enter in the model that we determined, and I'm using we to mean you, sorry. Determine is the best model for our system to operate for whatever time we need to operate. Okay? And so within that system, what, what I would say is the kids in the remote learning and the kids in, that are coming in and whatever system we set. It is still Ankeny certified hired teachers. It is our curriculum, our standards. Now I would be the first to say that an online and learning environment purely for students is not the best learning environment for, for kids. Um, and we could bring research to show you that. It's why go, going that, um, generally speaking is not something that I believe in. Um. But what I would say to you is our system is very familiar with working with students who come to us from various models. As you know, we're a growing district. Our classrooms are full of students who have transferred to our system from all over the United States, beyond the United States. We transition students in that have transcripts that are in different languages. We have students transfer in who have been in block schedules. We have students transfer in that are in trimesters. Um, we also have students who come to us from a homeschooling situation or a dual enrollment situation. And in all of those cases, we evaluate very closely what the students' learning looks, looked like. How can we best transition them into our learning environment? And based on that transition, where are they going to need support? How can we support them in the transition? So I definitely hear, I think in your question, the importance of us looking at all of those students in that remote learning environment, especially when they come back. And really all of our students, we want to look what, what is happening with student learning through the course of this year, right? But in particular, let's look at those students who are in a remote learning environment when they come back into us at semester. Or maybe it's next year. Um, what, I, I assume we'll find some things we did well in that environment, but we'll find some things that we learn about that may inform our future directions related to online learning, you know? So I, I appreciate your, your thought about looking at that data. I would call that like a program analysis, right? Or a program evaluation. We've got to evaluate whether this program that we're putting in place is really meeting the needs and the goals we have as a district for student learning.
Yeah, I have a hundred percent confidence in the staff. I don't think that's the issue. I think it's but we are, by way of making this decision, saying, hey, it's okay to learn online, you know, but we can't really guarantee the quality of the education because we can only promise one end of that equation. We can't promise that the student is going to learn in an environment that is conducive to learning. We can only promise that we're going to provide the information as best we can. And so that's, that's why I think it's important.
And Ryan, you're just alluding to every environment those kids are in. I mean, maybe there's no supervision or all of those kinds of things. Not thinking, you know, if we go to January or even all year. If, I hope that never happens, but if we go all year where we're doing, uh, hybrid and or, uh, virtual. What will our kids look like after a year and a quarter or, or just this first semester and last quarter? That's three fourths of a year. So I'm just, I'm just worried about like a mass of kids that are maybe look more like a fourth grader when they're supposed to be a fifth grader. You know what I mean? Just that kind of thing.
And the reality is there's companies that are sending out emails to their employees saying that, um, it doesn't matter what schools do. If you don't come to work, you're fired. So, I mean, there's definitely employers that are, that are giving people the ability to flexible, but there's just as many employers that they need those employees to come to work to, uh, maintain their level of production and maintain profitability. So it's really, it's real, this hybrid model, while it might be the best option, is really going to be tough for a lot of families. And so I just don't want that to be lost.
I can, I can speak for myself and probably for many others, um, Ryan, it's not lost on me. Um, where, where I have to balance it, I have to constantly remind myself that in this role, um, especially Chief Academic Officer, like I've got to make sure that we're, we're putting our decisions right in the middle of our mission and values. And that's, I can't help, I can't, I can't serve all masters. Like I care about businesses, my, my husband and my children and my in-laws, they all live in this community and they work in outside of education, all of them actually. What's that say? But, but, um, I, and I certainly empathize and care that we're, we're we're good partners in our community. When we come into this space and I'm here, I just know that I have to do what I believe to be best. And lead in a way that makes sure we get the highest possible student learning results we can get. So they're prepared for what's ahead.
Yeah. And I don't say that to really necessarily say that we should be thinking about how businesses are impacted, but how, how businesses require their employees to show up is going to impact the environment that our kids are learning in. Especially if their parents choose that they are virtual.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I, I, I just think the reality is, I, I mean, I, I, there is definitely a custodial aspect to what we do. Um, but I, I believe our priority is education and health and safety over custodial personally. And I, I think we're in for the long haul, whether we have everybody there or whether we're in a hybrid, there's going to be tons and tons of scenarios where your oldest child was sitting by a kid who tested positive and they're home for 14 days and the parents are going to have to figure out what to do. And then that kid goes back and then four weeks later, they get sent home for 14. I mean, I just, I, I really feel for our families that have multiple children in our system because especially at the secondary level where it's difficult to limit their exposure, at least the number of people that they're around. I, I think we're going to run into more, employers are going to run into more of that problem. Like I need to figure out what to do because X employee's gone for 14 days. Um, to care for their child. I mean, this is, um, if we don't do something to curb the, you know, we run a community center. That's literally what our schools are. They are a community center. I mean, when you think about it, we're looking at, I don't know, 14,000 people in our, you know, community if, are coming into our buildings every day. Um, to think that we can, you know, we're, we can be a hub of spread or not. The, the reality is the way that things look in Polk County right now. I just, I think we need to do what we can from a health and, health and safety perspective. Yeah. I, I empathize. I, I really understand that point. Um, but I just think it's, it's just hard. It's not easy by any means.
Well, and every single, every single district is in this exact same position. Especially in Polk County. We're, we're all living in the same, you know, pizza dish, so to speak. Um, yeah, I to, I totally agree with that because I'm, I'm looking right now. It's like, okay. You know, I work all day. My husband works all day. My eight-year-old's B day that he's home may not start until I get off of work at three o'clock. And I know that I am not the only person in the district who has that, you know, thought, you know, there's probably a lot of our teachers who are in that scenario where they're teaching during the day. They have to have somewhere for their kids and then they go home and have to manage their kids' education in the evening, you know? And for me, if that flexibility is in either our hybrid model or, you know, or if a kid gets sent home for two weeks because of an exposure or whatever. If that flexibility for our families is something that is available to where, you know, those parents can engage with their kid when the time that works for their family, I think that's going to help a lot. You know, because a lot of us, you know, I work in healthcare. I can't, I cannot show up for work for two weeks. But, um, and I know there's tons of people in that same situation. So I, I hope and I have confidence that that level of flexibility um, kind of permeates everything that we do. And hopefully those families that choose that, that full online option, you know, go into it with eyes wide open on what those expectations are for their kids. Because yeah, like you said, they're committing to it for a semester. That it's not a, and, and that the kids whose families go into that option, those kids know exactly what they're getting into and what those expectations are too. Because that's going to be a huge buy-in for, for those families. What information, I guess, um, do you, um, as board members need moving forward? Do you have questions that you don't have answered yet? I mean, I know some of this is, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're kind of waiting to see what that community forum, what, what issues kind of percolate to the top that maybe we haven't thought of. You know, we're, we're having this special board meeting on the 27th. Um, we had some issues. We had, we had talked that, oh, maybe we just need an extra meeting to just keep talking about this, to get that information from the community forum. You know, to be able to digest that as a board before we voted on it in August. And then the more we kind of talked about it and where the administration came to us, they were like, we need to act on this sooner. So as a board, you know, we've got those surveys coming out that I, Jen, um, Dr. Lindeman, tell me if I'm correct. Will we have the information from those surveys by the next board meeting?
Uh, if you mean, well, we, we're scheduled to start a third survey on the 27th and that one will be, I, I, I can share more about that in the board report on Friday. So obviously we wouldn't have that. We will have some initial data from who is selecting the online option. We'll get that out this week. Um, and we can share with you on Monday, what we're seeing as of Monday. The deadline won't be till later that week, but.
Right. I guess what information will we have at our hands between now and Monday? Besides being able to listen in on that community forum? To be able to answer any other questions that come up, to allow the board to make the best of a decision nobody wants to make, I guess, you know?
You'll have the hybrid model that we want to recommend. Um, maybe as early as Wednesday, if we can get that to you, but for sure by Friday. We just want to vet it through some of our work groups.
Sure.
You'll have that. You'll have the forum information. We can give you the initial results on our, um, online signup. And we can share what, what we're going to survey in the next survey to start next week. We'll have some information from our parent family group, perhaps. Jesse, right?
That is exactly why I unmuted myself. Yep.
Yeah, I guess, um, for board members, what information do you feel you don't have? Or what do you think that we can maybe try to get? So that we feel comfortable making a decision a week from today?
One, one of the things I think would be helpful is what is, what is this going to look like, um, from a, um, from our staffing side? You know, we've, we've got the folks that are going to choose, but really, you know, I know what it looks like on a normal day. They're all in the building, doing what they're doing and just trying to get my hand around, um, really how that's being divided and conquered, if you will. Um, and are we going to have anybody that isn't have anything to do? Um, from a staffing standpoint, meaning are, are all of our specials going to run? All of our extra, um, our band choir things running or all of those types? That's what I mean. Um, I'm just curious as to how that's going to play out, making sure, um, that we're, you know, fully utilized what we, what we can.
Yeah. So a couple of things, Erin, um, related to that. I think once we get, we'll get this staff, uh, survey out tomorrow where staff have an opportunity to say, I have documented reason that I need to work from home. Um, you know, it's not going to be probably a representative sample in the first couple of days, but we can use that and do a little bit of modeling around like what a work from home staff model to complement the work in building staff model would look like. Um, trying to include that in the board report for you all on Friday. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, I'm spending some time over the course of this week with the association. So Jody and I have some time with AEA, a, a large sort of, um, block of work time on Friday morning. Um, to really talk about the teacher role and the specifics of what that role would look like. Um, you know, in, in different kinds of structures, I think to, to sort of, um, get across the finish line, a lot of the work that the return to learn work committees have been doing. Um, and I'm going to also try to get some time with PPME. Um, this week, we were on the phone for a lot of the weekend talking about, uh, different, different options here, but to have the same kind of work planning conversation. Um, if we can make all of those things happen, uh, by the time the board report goes to you all on Friday, we certainly can include that. Um, if not, I will commit to getting it to you over the weekend as sort of an addendum to the board report. This sort of depends on schedules to have those conversations.
Can I kind of, um, go along with, um, Erin's thing there? So do we, do we have staff? Just let me know if I'm getting this compartmentally right. Who for documented health reasons through ADA or whatever can't physically be in the building, but may still be able to work, that may be able to do online instruction from home? Um, do we also have a subsection of teachers who may be able to do the virtual teaching? But still from a classroom setting, like they may be able to come to work in their classroom, yet still teach virtually. And then this other group of staff who will do the hybrid A day, B day mo, model of teaching?
Yeah, Lori, I've been thinking about it just sort of as the, um, people that need to stay home versus people that need to be in the buildings. I think we'll know much more detail once we start hearing from our staff members about the specifics of the accommodations that they're requesting. Um, what exactly they need. It's hard for me to imagine, but it might just be failure of imagination that, um, we will have a staff member that says, I need to be away from other people. Um, so the accommodation that I need is to come to work and have my own classroom space. We're just not going to have free space.
Right.
To go around and use for those folks. So I, I imagine if people say, I need to be away from other people, accommodation that we could reasonably make would be for them to work from home.
And then they would just have the, the tools that they need to be able to work from home.
That's right. And I, and I think that we're probably, you know, we're mostly going to, um, you know, I'm generalizing here, but mostly be able to accommodate that for teachers, I think for some associates. Um, and perhaps for people that work in more sort of office or administrative um, kind of roles. It's going to take some real creativity for me to think about some of, um, the other positions like custodial staff or, um, or nurses or food service folks, how we, how we make those, um, work from home options work. But people are certainly welcome to request those accommodations and let us try to figure out that puzzle.
Sure.
Hey, Jesse.
Well, go ahead.
Oh, I, I guess my, and you'll know more, you know, theoretically after July 31st.
That's right.
Where you may have that difference between, um, staff who need to be home and work from home. And then if there's a overage of students that need that virtual
Yeah.
Request that virtual instruction, you may have staff who say, hey, would you like, you know, they may be really excited at the thought of teaching virtually that you can kind of, instead of met or, you know, and it may be driven by the kind of teacher you need.
Right.
You know, secondary, elementary, all of those things. But will staff get that chance to choose if there are choices within, you know, the constraints of what's needed?
Yeah. I mean, I, I suppose we could go down that road. I, anecdotally, I'm worried we're going to have the opposite problem. Um, where we have more staff who need to stay home than students who. Where we have more staff who need to stay home than students who are opting into the all online option. So what we're going to do at least initially with our staff is make sure our staff are aware of the, of the process that they can go through to request work from home accommodation. If the numbers are different than what I expect, would be the first time I was surprised this year. And then we could, we can go back and sort of do another round and make sure that we're, you know, casting a wide net and giving all, all staff the, the opportunity to go through that process. I definitely need to activate that, but we'll find out in a couple of days, I guess.
I know, we just have so many good teachers that, you guys know that even more than I do, that any chance we can have for them to stay engaged would be so much better.
Could not agree with you more.
Awesome. Does anybody have anything else? Jim?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to visualize the hybrid model where you have the same teacher doing A and B days, correct? So then when the kids are at home, who's providing their instruction there?
The same teacher. So if I have 25 kids in my third grade classroom, on A day I have 12 of them attending, on B day I have 13 of them attending, and that just alternates. But I am making instructional decisions as to what do I need to have in their asynchronous environment? What do I need to have online for them when they're home? And what am I going to provide them when they're on site with me? For example, this is why we still need to build in some teacher planning and collaboration time and learning time, because teachers are going to be planning for two types of delivery here. And they may need, they may want to do a video of a whole group lesson that they upload and the student can watch it at any time. Like Lori says, at three o'clock when she gets home, or maybe it's at seven in the morning before she leaves. And then when they come in for their A or B day, the teacher may be engaging them in some small group instruction around that particular standard they were working on in the whole group. That's just me.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how they're going to be able to do all those things because that's challenging.
Yes, I mean, this is still a very challenging environment for our teachers and, and a very demanding instructional planning, as you well know, Jim.
Yes.
And.
That's what I'm trying to figure it out. I go, wow. That's a lot.
Thank you all for building three different planes while you're flying them all. I guess if there's any, if there's no immediate questions for many board members right now, Dr. Lindeman, Darren, can, if we think, if, we're going to think of things as we walk out of here or leave our computers. What's the best way to get those to you guys so we can get, get the answers we need? Is it, um, send them to you, you'll give, give them out to whoever can answer that best? Are you able to answer, you know, take that answer, that question and answer, and then send it out to the whole board? So we can just all keep getting that information? Because somebody may ask a really great question that I didn't think of, but I would be like, oh my gosh, I need that. I needed that piece of information. Is that something that makes sense?
Yes, and here's what I would say. If you can send them all to me, I'll make sure they're either A, answered and sent back to you if it's that quick and easy. B, incorporated into our community forum, if it's a broader question we think others. My hunch is probably what I'll do is have our team look at, are any of these already included in that? Also, if it's in our guidance already, if it's a question that we've already planned for in the guidance, we'll probably just redirect you into the guidance, just so you
Yes.
are able to go in and get it, because you'll get those questions too. But that ultimately, if there's still any remaining questions, we can put a FAQ list just for you together and send it to you in the board report on Friday.
Yep. I just want everybody on the board to have the most opportunity possible to get all the information they need to make a decision on Monday. And I think that's probably our hottest fire, so to speak, right now. Because, you know, community needs it, you guys need it, the staff need it, our students need it. But I don't want anybody at a board level going into this decision thinking, I'll do it, but I really wish I would have known this. And, and some of it is, if you have to tell us, we just, you know, we, we plan for what we think might happen on August 24th. August 23rd might change everything, you know, for the good, for good or bad. We, we just, you know, Amy's, Amy's word of the meeting last time of being nimble, I'll say it. You know, we do have to, you know, prepare, you know, plan for the best, prepare for the worst kind of thing. But thank you guys so much for another marathon Q and A session. But, um, if there's nothing else right now that anybody needs to address on this topic, we'll move on. I'm getting some glazed eyes. You guys are. Okay, well, we'll move on then, knowing that if people do have questions, kind of how we'll get them addressed between now and then. Okey dokey, construction change orders, those seem so normal after all the discussions we've had. I need a motion to approve the construction change orders as presented.
Motion.
Second. Um, do we have any questions on those? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Alrighty, thank you. Okay, next, contracts and agreements. We have leader and me renewal for Parkview and then fiscal year 21 Polk County ECI renewal. I need a motion to approve the contracts and agreements as presented.
Motion.
Second. Any questions on those? No, all right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, opposed?
Yeah, no, I don't think.
That was a, Deshara was at a delayed yes. Rewind, was, who was the second on the contracts?
Katie.
Okey doke. Thank you, guys. Next, policies, second and final reading. Can I have a motion to approve the second and final reading of presented policies? Policies are for immediate implementation upon second and final reading.
Motion. Second.
That was Erin. I'm zipping along too fast, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions on those policies? Nope, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Sorry, Deshara had a yes. I'm sorry, Deshara, I will, I will pause. Okay, opposed? None? Okay, thank you. Next, 2021 annual improvement goals. May I have a motion to approve the 2021 annual improvement goals as presented?
Motion.
Second. Any questions on those? I don't see anything. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Last one, recommend the suspension of our Cognia membership for the 2021 school year with the intent to revisit membership in the fall of 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Got right on there. Any questions on that item? No, all right, thank you. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? None, all right, thank you. I have no new business. Board member reports, I'll start my way at my top and circle around. Erin?
Nothing for tonight.
Amy?
Uh, just thank everyone again who came up with those plans and then came up with the altered plan from the plans after Friday. Just ask everyone from all over for some grace through all of this. Grace for families, grace for students, grace for staff. Um, and just, we all need to think outside the box. This is a committee issue. So when we're talking A-day, B-days, you know, communities get together and, and rotate around and, and host three or four kids at your house or try to find anything that works. If we all do that and think outside the box, we're going to get through this. Our kids are going to be, are going to be good. And so I just ask for everyone to, for grace and some creativity in this time.
Uh, Katie?
Just want to thank all the people who put that plane together. It's just a lot of time and effort and energy and lost sleep and conversation after conversation after conversation. So thank you for that. There was just a lot in it and I think it, while there was a lot, it was easy for us to consume. And I think that speaks readily to your efforts. And so thank you for, for all of that. And I would just echo Amy's sentiments. I just ask for grace and extend grace as much as possible. This is not what anybody wanted, so.
Jim?
Thanks to the committee and all their work. They've been doing it all summer and it keeps changing on them. And so thanks for their flexibility and being nimble.
Deshara?
Thing they just said, but I also wanted to highlight how awesome Dr. Lindeman is. You are coming into this situation that is absolutely insane. And your leadership has just been so impressive thus far and I appreciate that. And all of the new people on our team who are having to lead this effort in addition to those who have been here. I'm just, I'm really excited about what we'll come up with and how we'll move forward. Although it won't be a situation where everyone is excited about it. I believe that we have the right people and the right chemistry and the right heart and motivation to do the best for our district.
Amen on that. Ryan?
I agree with everything that's been said so far. I have been so surprised at districts who have come out and said, this is for sure what we're doing when school starts. It's, I'm just really surprised. And so I can appreciate the approach that we've taken, saying this is what our plan is. But things change every day. And so, you know, when we come out with something, we know that's what we're going to do. And while some families may feel that it's a lack of information, every district, whether they've come up with a decision or not, are changing everything right now. And so I can just appreciate the way that we've handled it and am proud of our district.
Awesome. I would echo 1,000% what the board members have said. We have been so impressed and happy just with the hard work that everyone has been doing. And we see the emails that are supportive. We see the emails that aren't supportive, that are frustrated, that are upset, but also that are grateful for all the work that you guys are doing. And it's not, to say it's not easy is beyond an understatement, but we appreciate you guys so much. And we appreciate the families who contact us every single day, multiple times a day, you know, asking for clarification, because it just, it really does prove to us how engaged the families are in their kids' education in Ankeny. And I think that's something to be proud of. It's hard reading some of the ones that are, that are frustrated sometimes, but you know what? Really, sometimes really good things come from people who are frustrated because they force us to think of things that we don't think about and that we never maybe would have thought before. So, um, getting comfortable being uncomfortable is, is all part of this and I'm grateful for it. Toughens our skin a little bit, but it makes us better. And so I'm really thankful for you guys. If we don't say that enough, tell us that we need to, you know, make you guys, you know, fill up your buckets a little bit, because you guys have all been burning a candle at every single, and, and, and we see that and we appreciate it. As much as we might send you an email at four in the morning when we wake up, don't feel you have to answer at four in the morning when I personally might send emails, because that's when my alarm goes off. I give you all permission to tell me to wait. But just, um, thank you guys. Thank the community. I really hope that people from the community engage and, and be involved in that forum. Because, I mean, we need to hear it, you know? This isn't the time to sit out and, and not have your voice heard, because there's so many things that we don't know. And also, you know, every time you email us, we, we know that and we appreciate it. Keep emailing up the chain of elected officials in our communities as well. Because as much as local matters and, and we care about Ankeny and we care about our students, the people who ultimately answer to all of us too need to hear this information. I'm just going to put my little plug in for advocacy, you know, with our state representatives and our state senators and our governor and the, you know, all of the people above us who make these decisions on a Friday afternoon that upend weeks and months of work, you know, unintentionally or intentionally. I'd, I'd make no judgments on that. But they need to hear from all of us in these communities as much as they, as much as we need to hear from all of you. And that's, that's really important, because we're the ones who live with the decisions, you know, that are made above us. So I'll shush. Interim Superintendent Lindeman, do you have a report?
Quick one, thank you for the support, encouragement and encouragement. More for our teams that have been working so hard. It's really quite a privilege to sit here and represent the work of all of the people who've been the ones putting it together. So, um, yeah, I, it's, yeah, thank you for that. I, I know they appreciate it too. The second thing, I just can't help but continuing to reflect back. And I know, Erin, you would have been on the board at this time, but I keep going back to when this community faced a very big decision to split into two feeder systems. And while I know that wasn't a safety and health, there, there's an element of higher urgency here and concern related to health, for sure. The magnitude of the decision at that time for our community and the angst in our community, the anxiety in the adults in particular, was incredibly high going into that. And what I know is, once we were able to implement that feeder, our kids were amazing. They adjusted and things settled in and they did school the way they knew to do school. That's going to happen here too. Once we make our decision of where we're starting and we get kids into the classrooms as they know to do, our kids will settle in, they will learn all that they need to learn in terms of our new structures and routines. And, and it will go very well. The kids are easy and they really are. That, that's why this work is so much fun for our staff. So, um, thank you for listening to all of the, the responses we're, we're providing to you. Certainly we don't know it all, but as we've moved through the summer, we've certainly been able to put together a lot of detail around how this will look. So that's it for me. Thank you for letting me talk.
Anytime. Okay. I move that we hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51C of the Open Meetings Law to discuss strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Any action from said closed session will be taken in open session. I need a roll call vote after a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Uh, Erin, was a motion from you and the second was Ryan? Okay, we will do the roll call vote to go into closed session. Do I have to? Do you want me to do it because of the? All right, Director Bohanna?
Yes.
Director Klaus? I'll go, I'll skip, I'll skip her. Director Ford?
Yes.
Director Johnson?
Yes.
Director Lovstad?
Yes.
Director Tally Rainey?
Yes.
Director Weldon?
Yes.
Director Klaus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Shouldn't work.
Was that her saying yes or was that, okay? Sorry, I'm a little trouble hearing my, okay. Sorry, I'm a little trouble hearing my, okay.
Did we get?
I got everybody. Okay, we'll take a.
Five-minute recess, which is one you want.
Hey Lori. Hey Lori.
What?
We can, we can close out.
Oh, sorry. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. What Jim?
We can leave the meeting, right?
Yeah, everybody can leave the meeting, I believe. And then we'll just come back into adjourned, or I'll go back into adjourned. That wasn't. That wasn't. That wasn't.